Okay, we will call to order the special meeting of the Board of Alderman for Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the two thousand twenty-six budget department head meeting. If everybody will please stand for the pledge allegiance and a silent prayer.
Alderwoman Cavallo.
Present.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Mosley. Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy. Alderman New James. Alderman Rinaldi. Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderwoman Talley.
Present.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman D G O Vincarlo.
Here.
Eleven present, four absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. The next item on the agenda would be the discussion with the department heads. We're going to ask this year, keep it a little tighter this year, please, all questions are to the budget. Keep all questions on the budget to the budget, not three years down the road, or how do you feel? Let's keep it on the budget, okay? Also, when you're asking questions, please state what book you're in, what page you're on, what item you're talking about for the person answering the questions, okay? So we'll start with Mayor, Mayor Purnuski and his office.
If you guys have any questions, I don't have anything.
Go right into questions whenever whoever's ready. Questions for the mayor?
No, I'm not.
Alderman Elsa.
Good evening. I'm going to start off with the salary increases because we've seen quite a bit of salary increases in the last couple of years, and I'd like to have some kind of an explanation as to how these are figured out and come to the conclusions.
I threw a coin in the air, hence they got less.
Get a smaller coin the next time. You're using a big coin.
The budget difference is just about one hundred thousand dollars. Fifty of that is attributable to the liaison, which is the first time it's appearing through my budget. Last year, when Bob Haxey came on, because it was the middle of the year, we funded it all through education. This year, we're splitting that fifty percent, my office fifty percent the Department of Education. So fifty thousand goes to that salary, which is new for this year. Another portion is there was a position in the office that had been unfilled through the first year as an aide position. I think that was at sixty thousand, and we've actually filled it as of yesterday, and it's at eighty, eighty plus, eighty-eight thousand, I think, for this year. So that's eighty-eight thousand of the increase in salary is attributable to those two differences.
That was an aide, I'm sorry. You said aide, right?
That was an aide position that had been carried last year. I think it's sixty thousand, but it wasn't filled. It was just filled this year, and it's at eighty-eight. So that's a thirty, twenty-eight thousand dollar difference. So there's the seventy-eight thousand. The other twenty-two is fundamentally just increases in people who've worked in the in the office to either equalize them or get a slight raise across the board. I think everybody did this year in my office, got a slight raise, except for Joe Gary as chief of staff, who stayed the same, and obviously my salary, which is set by charter and only changes with the change of term. So that, those are how the numbers were done. They're small percentages, I think, for everyone, maybe one percent or two percent, I think, on average for the increases.
Okay, I'm going to make some comments and ask you to comment back on them, which I'm sure you will. There's a significant amount of money being given out in raises in the last two years, last year's and this year's, and...
Are you talking about raises in my office?
Yes.
Your office.
Mayor, is that microphone on? I'm sorry.
It is now.
Okay.
Because I went through these numbers, and I looked at the twenty-three, twenty-four actuals, then into the to the new budget, and, for instance, and let me preface my comments. At no time am I saying that anybody's not doing their job or not doing a good job, because I think they all are doing a very good job. And I'm not going to be here to say that they're not doing a good job, or they don't deserve anything. But I have a hard time looking at these things and seeing that, take the mayor's aides, for instance, it's gone up quite a bit. Because, if I can find my numbers here quickly, it was averaged out at forty-two thousand one hundred thirty-three a few years ago. It's up to eighty-two thousand, eighty, eighty-two thousand now, per position, based on the number of people in the budget. And I have a hard time looking around at blue collar workers and people working and taxpayers who are struggling and trying to justify that much of an increase. Again, I'm not saying they're not worth money, but in the last couple of years, there's been a lot of money put out in your office, and I think we need to look at this and keep in mind that it's coming from somebody else's pocket, meaning the taxpayers. And I can only imagine if we sit down to negotiate with the unions and stuff, that they don't refer back to this and say, hey, you can give these out, how come we can't get them? So I don't know what comment you'd like to make on that.
I don't know how far back you're going to get the averages. I mean, I've been in office for a year and a half.
Right.
Right? So the first budget in twenty-three wasn't mine when we took it over. And I don't think we've increased the salaries of any individual significantly since I took office. I think last year they all stayed the same. So what they were when I took office through last year's budget, I don't think we increased any of them at all. And then this year, I've increased some of them by an average of two thousand dollars. A couple were shifted up a little bit to equalize them. But as I said, the bulk of the change in the hundred thousand, seventy-eight thousand is attributable to the fact that there's a position that didn't exist when I took office, but I said I was going to put it in there. That was a tenant of the campaign, was the education liaison. And then there was a position that had gone unfilled that I finally filled. And that's, so that's the bulk of the amount that went in there. But I don't know where the significant raises that you're talking about are found, you know, from before. I know where I came in in twenty-three and where we are today, and they're not significantly higher, as far as I can tell.
I'm just taking off of page one of the department head meetings general fund documentation. And actuals in fiscal year twenty-three were seven hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah, and actuals in twenty-three, though, so you're looking at some positions that, for instance, Mayor O'Leary's last two years or three years in office, he didn't fill the chief of staff position. When I came in, I filled the chief of staff position, so that position got filled. He had had one, if you recall, and Mac left, and he never, he never replaced Mac. So in the twenty-three fiscal year, the actual wouldn't show a person holding that position, but I do have a chief of staff that I filled in that position.
All right. I have to look back in the old book, but to show you that there was an increase in salaries. I didn't think we were going to...
Right. And don't forget that from twenty-three, the budget that was adopted in twenty-three to the budget the next year would have shown, that would have shown an increase in the mayor's salary, which was the statutorily or charter required change in the salary that happens every, now it happens every four years. It used to be every two years.
Okay. Well, again, adopted budget for twenty-four for mayoral aides was one hundred twenty-six four. That's the adopted budget. It went to two hundred thousand in twenty-five. This year...
So, I mean, I don't know how far back you're going, but you can go back to times that were before I was in office. Let me say this. My staff, and I think you said it at the beginning, and I appreciate that, but my staff works very hard. They don't make overtime. Most of them are here, you know, not only do they work full days, but they all work on weekends when events come up. They work during the day. They're here at night when things are going on. So there's a lot that goes into it. I think they're paid a fair salary for the work that they do. And I can say that they are, in many cases, the face of the city. They're dealing with people out there, and all I get...
Again, Mr. Mayor, you know, when you look and see that there's a budget of one hundred twenty-six thousand for the year twenty-four, and there's a budget of two hundred thousand for the same line item in twenty-six.
Right. What's the difference between those two numbers?
Pardon?
What's the difference between those?
You got one hundred twenty-six four to two hundred thousand.
Okay.
And they're both based on three mayoral aides positions.
What year, so it's not, it's not two hundred thousand this year?
Pardon?
It's not two hundred thousand this year?
No, it's more.
Yeah, this year it's two forty-five.
Yeah. So again, it's even more. And I'm sorry, but when you do things, people have to look at history. My income goes up whatever little bit, and Mr. Trump, Mr. Biden, anybody else has never said, oh, you're retired doing a good job. We're going to give you sixty percent, or twenty percent, or forty percent. I get single-digit percentage based on the economy. These raises have far surpassed what is inflation over the years. And at some point, you got to say enough is enough. You can't keep giving out twenty thousand, twenty, eighteen thousand.
I haven't given out an eighteen thousand or a twenty thousand dollar raise, Jack.
I...
What I'm telling you is...
Make the difference.
When I came in office in twenty-three, I inherited the mayor's staff, and I kept, and I kept them. For the most part, the staff that I have today is the same staff that Neil O'Leary had, with the addition of Nikki Ermo as an aide, Joe Gary as chief of staff. That was the, that was the, the staff that I brought in last year's budget. We didn't give anybody a raise in last year's budget. So there were two new positions, but the, what they got from twenty-three to what they got last year, I think was the same number. I don't, I don't think they gave them a raise. But, but after that, this year, we've added another position, which was one that I had said we were going to do, that came on board. It appears for the first time in my office this year, because last year, we, we paid it out of education, and I've added, I've hired an aide, which went from sixty to eighty-eight thousand in the salary account. So that's twenty-eight and fifty is seventy-eight thousand of the one hundred thousand dollar difference in the office this year.
All right. I have fiscal year twenty-four, the salaries averaged for that mayoral aide position, forty-two thousand one hundred thirty-three. Fiscal year twenty-six, they're averaging eighty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven. And I'm just taking a calculator and the numbers that are in the books, actual numbers used, the ones you presented. So when you say you haven't given out...
The fiscal year twenty-three budget was adopted before I came into office.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
That ended July of twenty-three. It ended, that, the fiscal year twenty-three budget ended in July of twenty-three.
Yep.
I assumed office in December of twenty-three.
Okay.
I inherited a staff to which I made two additions, Joe Gary, Nikki Ermo. That budget that was presented for the start of the twenty twenty-four year, which is the twenty-five fiscal year that we're in now, it is my belief, I don't believe that I gave anybody a raise from one year to the next last year. I think we kept everybody the same. This year, I'm presenting a budget that does have some raises in it. You can see they averaged two thousand. There's a couple that are slightly higher than that. And I've added a position that didn't exist before, but one that I said I was going to add. It appears this year for the first time. Last year, it was in the education budget. This year, fifty percent of it is my budget, fifty thousand. And I brought in a person to fill a vacant aide position that has gone from sixty to eighty-eight. So there's, out of the hundred thousand change from last year to this year, seventy-eight thousand is because of those two positions, and the rest would be made up by some raises that we gave. But I don't, I didn't give raises last year. What happened from twenty-three to twenty-four wasn't my, my budget when I took office in December that existed. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, but I didn't, I didn't make those changes. But at this point, I think the salaries that are being paid to my aides in the office are fair for the work that they do. And they all work very hard, and they all work very long, and I think the numbers are fair. I think it's very difficult whenever you're in government service to pay fair numbers. And one of the reasons the mayors pay and the clerks pay, the sheriffs pay, all change every, every four years now, is because we had never made those changes, because they're difficult to adjust government salaries appropriately.
Well, again, I'm looking at the numbers I have here, and I've averaged it out for the three years. In twenty-four to twenty-five was a twenty-four thousand dollar increase. Twenty-five to twenty-six is from an average of six sixty-six to eighty-one six. So you can say you're not giving a raise, but the numbers are saying there's more money there. Somebody's getting more money. Who's getting it? I don't know. Because you got three positions and three positions. So...
Okay.
And, and I can look at your bottom numbers, and they don't change, but you're making moves somewhere along the line.
I just told you what I did. I don't know what more I, you've got, you've got a book that has every position and what they make.
Yes.
And you can go back, I don't have all of them going back that far, but you can go back and see what they are.
I did.
Okay.
That's how I came up with these numbers.
But at the end of the day, what I'm telling you is that what I'm paying them today is a fair salary for the jobs that they hold and the work that they do. We can disagree about that. I don't know what else to tell you about that. But I believe that they're fair salaries for the jobs that they do, hold, and the work that they do, and the hours that they put in. And we can, we can disagree about that, but you yourself have conceded that you don't feel that they're not doing their job, they're not working hard, and they're not doing a good job.
That's the point I'm trying to make. But at the same token, I think that if you take your refuge department workers, your police department, your fire department, your park department people, they're doing their jobs too.
And they all got, they all got good raises.
But they didn't get that much money.
They did get good raises last year.
They didn't get a twenty-four thousand dollar raise.
Nobody, show me the person who got a twenty-four thousand dollar raise since I've been in office.
From twenty-four to twenty-six, it's actually been thirty-nine thousand dollar raise in those positions.
And one, one person got that raise?
All three positions averaged out to be a thirty-nine thousand dollar per position.
I'm going to have to go back and do the averaging math, but I, could you point to an individual salary that is thirty-nine thousand dollars higher today than it was three years ago? Or two years ago? I mean, again, some of this is you're going back to times before I was the mayor.
I have to find that list, and I didn't have it prepared, because I had just notes with the regular thing. It, you'll indulge me to time to look. I won't hold up the hearing, but I will keep looking, because I didn't make these numbers up, trust.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting you did.
This wasn't a dream of mine.
I know I didn't give anybody that kind of a raise. But at the end of the day, the point I want to make to you is where we are today, since I've taken office, these are fair salaries for the positions, for the work, and for the hours, and especially for the performance of the staff. And I'm, I, I don't have an issue with what they are, and I'm not hiding anything. You get a book with all of the detail that goes to it. So it's quite clear where we stand today. And the difference from last year to this year, I've explained to you, seventy-five, almost eighty percent of it is two positions.
Well, I unfortunately didn't have the opportunity last year to scrutinize that budget and bring it up, how much was going in. That was a fault of mine, because I wasn't aware of how this was going to work, and I didn't, I didn't do the line item by out line item as much as I did this year. But I will tell you that when last year's budget was presented to us, there was a significant raise, that much I know. And this year, again, there's a raise. But you have to look at the last three years. At what point do you say enough is enough? Somebody has to freeze up. My income's frozen up. The taxpayers in most cases are frozen. We don't get raises just because we're doing a good job, or we're not doing a, whatever. It, there's, there has to be a year when we just say enough is enough, we're not doing anymore.
Jack, my budget is ninety-five thousand dollars less this year than it was last year.
And would it be a...
Ninety-five thousand dollars less.
Would it be a sin if it was three hundred thousand dollars less? Would it be a sin?
If, if you want to present a budget that's three hundred thousand dollars less, I'd be happy to look at it, Jack.
Now, I'm going to present a different budget when we're finished with the questions and answers.
Okay.
Because I'm going to be fair enough to listen to answers before I do that.
I look forward to it.
I don't know what the exact number's going to be, but last year, I gave you an alternative quick, but it wasn't done right. This year, it will be done right, and you will have an alternative.
Okay.
Um, but again, I'm going to stand by that. When I look at the numbers and they're different, there's a change. Forty-two thousand one hundred thirty-three averaged in twenty-four, eighty-one thousand six average in twenty-six. Who did it? You did part of it. O'Leary did part of it. But at any rate, we have to go back to other people and say, you have to give us more money, and we have to say to other people, you're not going to get more money. That's the problem. And as a representative of the people, I have to be able to say that.
All right.
There's a, it's hard for me to justify.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm also saying to you that it's not, your average has doubled, which means the salaries would have doubled. And I'm asking you to point out any salary that has doubled in the last two years. I'm, just point to them. You're talking three salaries, your average has gone from forty to eighty, which, if I'm correct in math, and it's been a long time since I've studied math in school, but I think if you double the average, you would double the underlying numbers.
Just about.
Right, on average, right?
Just about.
So I, I, I am convinced, and I can tell you with certainty, that no, nobody in my office is making twice what they made two years ago.
How could that, how could that not beat them? When the average was forty-two one hundred thirty-three?
I'm showing you what they're making. You have books that show you what they used to make. Point to the number where they used to be half of what they are today, and I, and that's how it would be. I don't know how you got to your...
Actual numbers in twenty-four were forty-two hundred and thirty-three dollars, forty-two thousand one hundred thirty-three.
That's your average.
That's your average of three people.
I, I, I don't know what you're looking at.
Take the average of three people in your twenty-six, it's eighty-one six sixty-six.
Okay. I, I don't know how you got to that, but I know that one of my offices is making twice as much.
Let me, again, I'm, I'm going to step off of that for now, because we can talk about it all day long. When I get the right number in my head, I'll get it to you.
Okay. And I'd be happy to see it. I'm, I'm intrigued by this now, if that's what the averages show. But I'd be hard pressed to figure out who got that kind of money over the, the two years. So I may owe somebody money. They're not...
Now, there's a, there's a vacant position also at eighty-eight thousand dollars. You just said you filled it yesterday.
Correct. That's why it went up to eighty-eight, because we're in the process of filling it.
The vacant position was budgeted for eighty-eight thousand.
Right.
But the filled positions are seventy-five thousand and eighty-two thousand.
Because it wasn't filled as of the time the, but, when the budget was sent to you, which you got these budget back at the beginning of March, right? The position wasn't yet filled. It was filled as of yesterday. I knew I was in the process of filling it, so that number was carried at the eighty-eight thousand, which is the current salary. So we put the right number into the budget. It just was filled yesterday. But we knew we were working towards that, so it made sense to put the eighty-eight thousand dollar number in.
So the new person who's going to start at eighty-eight?
Correct.
And yet the people you've had there are making seventy-five and eighty-two?
That, that's correct.
Okay. It doesn't list it different. I'm sorry. You know, I mean, maybe you had different intentions.
It'll be a new job title when it comes through. So, but anyway, that's, that's, that's the circumstances of it, right?
Okay. And again, I can only go by twenty-four as the audited... And again, I can only go by twenty-four as the audited final numbers. Because twenty-five is a speculation. We don't know what that final number is yet. So I have to look at twenty-four.
All right, but I will, I will go back and tell you now, this is the point that I made to you before. If you're looking at audited numbers, you have to look at the fact that there were vacancies. So the position that today is eighty-eight thousand was carried last year at sixty thousand, but it wasn't filled. So the audited number would show sixty thousand less because no one received that salary. That's, that's why these averages, if you're just looking at audited and the rest, it's not going to make any sense because you're dealing with apples and oranges. The budget for last, last fiscal year showed a sixty thousand dollar position that was never filled last year. This year it was filled. So, so if you're looking at actual expenditures last year, they're going to be sixty thousand less than the budgeted number because we didn't hire that person until this year.
Okay. I'll, I'll rethink that when I look at it.
Okay.
Again.
Alderman Elsaf, you all set?
No, no, no. I'm just, I had changed pages when I tried to find the other items. Now I'm going back. Fifty-four, thirty-three. Item number. I have a note here of purchased property went up almost four and a half times from that. Five-four-three-hundred is the item number. I don't have the page in front of me right now. I made a bad note on that too.
What's the item?
The maintenance contracts.
What's the item number?
Fifty-four-three-hundred. It's purchased property services, the maintenance contract.
Page four.
Pardon?
Page four.
Page, page one, actually. In the general fund backup documentation. Page one. Second group.
Right. So that, that was, that's budgeted this year at forty-five hundred. It was budgeted last year at forty-five hundred. Those are the contracts to maintain the machine. As it turns out, last year, the actual cost, because we pay as they do work on them, was two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. The budget number is the same as last year. So the budget hasn't gone up. It's just that fortunately, we didn't have issues with the machines last year for the maintenance costs to come and deal with them. These are guys when the machine doesn't do the copies right, you gotta bring somebody in. So the maintenance contract is at, you know, is at forty-five hundred as a budget. They come in, they charge you every time they show up. Last year they showed up for two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars worth of service calls. But this year we're going to budget forty-five hundred again. That's the difference between those.
But what happened to the extra then? What, you know, you had forty-five hundred last year. What happened?
What do you mean, what happened to it?
Well, you said it cost you twenty-four hundred something.
Yeah. So you know at the end of the year, when we have a surplus? This, that number is part of what goes into the surplus at the end of the year. It's all the money we haven't spent over the year that we then will report as a surplus at the end of the year and decide where, how, how that's going to get allocated.
That's, one of my questions is that when you look historically, and you have to go historically, you don't know this. You went four hundred and eighty-two dollars in twenty-three, which I know it's not your budget, but I'm just saying, how do you sit these?
Alderman Elsaf, just let's stay on the budget. Listen, hold on, before you start screaming, let's not go back to Mayor O'Larry's budget. Let's at least start at, at Mayor Pernaruski's budget from last year and go forward. We're not going back five years in budget discussions for the two thousand, twenty-six budget.
I'm not asking him to justify. I'm trying to show a pattern here that we should be following.
I don't talk over you, so just give me a second here, okay? You keep going back to twenty-three, twenty-four. These aren't his years. So he's explained it several times to you. So if you want to start from last year's budget and move forward, I'm okay with that. But you're going back budgets that he was not responsible for. So let's stay with twenty-five.
Understand that. And if you let me finish, you'll understand what I'm saying.
I let you talk for a while now and you are unhappy with the raises. I get it. But let's get, stay on twenty-five and twenty-six, okay?
I'm trying to develop the pattern that you use when you do.
You're developing a pattern.
Properties. And you just said that it was.
The twenty, the twenty-four fiscal year budget had a budget number at that line item of four thousand, five hundred dollars. That's the budget for maintenance for the equipment in my office. Last year, out of that budgeted number, we only spent two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. This year, we're budgeting four thousand, five hundred dollars again for that. And we'll spend whatever we spend up to the four, four thousand, five hundred. If we have to spend more than that by some chance, we come to you for a budget transfer. If we spend less than that, then there will be a surplus. But I can't tell you, as we sit here today, exactly how much it's going to cost my office to maintain those machines. If there's a glitch in them, we have to call somebody in. So forty-five seems like a reasonable number to us to cover those costs. Last year, we only spent two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six.
I, I do understand that. But again, the difference of what you're budgeting and what you spent
Right.
Is what you're going to charge the taxpayers in your budget per, for a mill rate. That's how you're going to come up with your final number. And if you do this on fifty line items, it's, the taxes could have been dropped lower if you did the historic number.
Historically, Jack, I can tell you exactly how that works. Historically, the budget has run at about a five million dollar surplus. Last year we were just under six million dollars. Every year, over the course of my time here, with some very rare exceptions early on, when we actually ran ten and fifteen million dollar surpluses when the oversight board was here, we tend to run about a five million dollar surplus. That's about one percent of a four hundred and forty-five, four hundred and forty-six million dollar budget. Because you can never say precisely what each item is going to cost, right? There's, there's variances in all of these line items over the course of a twelve month period. These budgets are put together beginning in November to be, for a fiscal year that's going to start the following July and run for twelve months after that. So we, we estimate as close as we can to what's there. We try to estimate in a way that's not going to cause us to run a deficit. I'm proud to tell you that today, the city of Waterbury, having been bankrupt twenty-five years ago, is one of the few major cities that's not facing a deficit in the upcoming year because of the way we budget and operate financially. We're not having to lay off workers. We're not having to cut programs. We, we issued a solid budget that literally spends ninety-five thousand dollars less than it did last year to provide exactly the same services that we have always provided. That's how we get there. And the idea that we, we, we estimate a forty-five hundred and only spend twenty-five hundred, to me isn't an issue. It's prudent in the way we're operating. And at the end of this, the five million dollars will go to capital projects. It'll go, some of it will go into the unallocated capital or reserve funds that we have and it will get used. But it's, it's, if we stay on track, historically, we've run about a five million dollar surplus. This year I expect it to be a little bit less because some of the issues with Waterbury Hospital and some of the state funding that's been cut on us over the year, but we're still going to run a surplus. But that's what, that's what that looks like when you add up all those fifty line items in which this happens. Some of these will go over. If we have a winter in which we get seven major snowstorms, which we're due for, it's going to cost us more under public works than we would have. And we would adjust this money and pay for it that way. One major ice storm, one major hurricane that comes up the coast and significantly damages us. Flugs like our neighbors saw in the last year. All of those things are possibilities that we can't account for. Tariffs, by the way, are another possibility none of us accounted for over the last year that are going to drive up costs for everything we're doing this year.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that when we're setting this budget, if we know historically the numbers are less, we should adjust them. So that when we come down to the bottom line and we set a tax rate, we're setting it on something that doesn't have built-in surpluses.
Do you think a five million dollar, one percent surplus year over year is an extraordinary, outrageous thing for us to do as a city?
Not necessarily. But how many, how much?
What do you think the surplus should be to be reasonable?
Be honest with you, zero budget, zero it out, bury it. And then you're charging the people with, how much is five million dollars in, in taxes?
About a mil.
One mil.
One mil.
I'd love to pay one mil less. Because I don't want to pay one mil more. Why wouldn't I want to pay one mil less?
I, I get it. But what I'm telling you is you can't tell me exactly what any one of these line items are going to cost, any more than I can tell you.
I, I'm not trying to be exact either.
But you just said you want to get to zero. That's the only way you'd save that mil in the surplus.
You asked me for an ideal situation. My point is trying to be, let's be more realistic with historic. And I know you don't want to talk about yesterday's budgets and stuff, but that's how you see a pattern.
But, but this, this year, this year, as I'm telling you, I'd like to be able to come and report to you a five million dollar surplus. I think we're going to have to report a less surplus because we've, we've extended this Waterbury Hospital issue a year or two past where we thought it was going to go because of the bankruptcy. That was something that was unfortunate to us.
It's a killer and we all agree to that.
But what I'm saying is that's the kind of thing, these small cushions are designed, will, 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 you can't do this precisely. So we come as close as we can and we, we hold the line on spending. But I would much rather end the year with a five million dollar surplus than a five million dollar deficit. And Hartford and New Haven and Bridgeport are all ending this year with huge budget deficits. Previous mayors, if you want to talk about history, budgeted ninety-nine percent collection rates. Unrealistic. We budget ninety-six, we collect ninety-eight. But this year, when Waterbury Hospital may not pay all its taxes, that's going to be a good thing because we, we were realistic in those numbers. That's how we try to get from where we are. We're never going to be exact. My goal is always to err a little bit on the side of being beyond what we need rather than less than what we need and having to run a deficit, bond the difference or go to the taxpayers with a, a supplemental tax bill next year. And I, I think, and I firmly believe, and I'll say this over and over again, that hitting within one percent of a budgeted amount on a four hundred and forty-six thousand dollar budget is actually pretty extraordinary. Four hundred and forty-six million dollar budget. I'm sorry, it's pretty extraordinary.
I, I agree. I remember setting budgets up and when I sat before, to my boss and he said, you spent ten thousand last year. Why are you asking for fifteen this year? Well, I think it's going to cost us more because, go back and work on your budget. Because it only cost nine thousand a year before.
Okay.
Look at the pattern. That's what they say.
Right.
See what it's going to be. You look at the index, what it's going to go up, you got an average of whatever percentage inflation is. And you, you calculate that in there. And yes, your fingers are crossed all the time.
Well, you can't, you can't run a city crossing your fingers on surpluses and deficits.
What I'm saying is your, your, your fingers are crossed that you don't know there's going to be a hurricane or.
I think we've done pretty good at a, at a one percent differential from budgeting to actual. I think that's pretty damn good on being about as close as you can be without having hindsight. The only way you could do a better job, frankly, Jack, is if we budgeted after the fact, right? If we could set a budget to raise, to collect taxes for what we've actually spent, we could get to where you want to be. But since we have to do it based on the future, I think a history that says we're within one percent is a pretty extraordinary thing.
Well, again, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be more realistic, I guess. I guess I try to be idealistic. I want to be able to charge as little as I can when it comes to that.
So do I. So do I.
And, you know, again, I gotta go back to the taxpayers and say to them, they got this much raise, you can't have it. I gotta say to the blue collar workers, white collar.
Well, I still want to see the raises you're talking about because the raises that I'm looking at, you know, year, for this year alone are averaged two thousand dollars for most of the employees. And a couple of them are a little bit more than that. Some of them are less than that. But they average two thousand dollars per, per person. And they didn't get a raise last year. Those are for positions that have now gone two years. And I don't know if they got a raise the year before when, in the budget. Neil may have given some raises as he was on his way out. But I didn't, I didn't raise anyone's salary that I can recall last year that were, that, of people who were working in my office. But anyway, I think we probably should move on to a better question. I don't know. Is there any more questions, Alderman Elsaf?
One of the questions that's been asked of me, and I'm going to ask it of you, is your, um, the liaisons for the I-84 project and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
It's pretty much completed except for exit twenty-one has to be knocked down. It's about all I see that's pending.
Mm-hmm.
Why do we still have the position?
It's a, it's a, it's a part-time position. There's still a little bit that does with eighty-four. They're also beginning the new process, you know, the planning stages have begun on the new project for the new mix master. The work that had been done till now was to buy another twenty-five years out of that. Believe it or not, to get to those twenty-five years, we start today to get that project done. Having said that though, Kenny also does other things in the office where he's troubleshooting for a lot of people who fall through either the constituent service where they get some things in and some other issues where he actually goes out and deals with some of the problems, meets with homeowners when they have issues, tries to figure out what the issue is, how to resolve it. And in many cases, it falls on him to explain to people why the problem they're having isn't a city problem, but to go out there, meet with them and have that conversation. And he does that as well, so.
Fine. Now I have an answer when it's questioned, you know? I, I gotta answer these questions to people too, you know?
I don't take it personally, Jack.
Trust me, I'm, I'm not that smooth that I wouldn't say it. Now, the community service staff is part-time people?
Those are the folks who answer the phone when you call in downstairs, yeah.
They're all part-timers?
Um, I think, I think there's.
Oh, no, you have one.
One is full-time, the other two are part-time. So it's, it's two full-time equivalent positions.
Okay. And the liaisons to the Board of Ed?
Yes.
What's, what's the story with that? Why is that necessary? When I believe the superintendent's job is to keep you informed of what's going on.
Well, I, I, I thought so too. And when I ran for office and my first time, I made many months in office, we had a superintendent with, which there was no communication. And I had campaigned on and said that I was going to put in an educational liaison and I did that. And it's someone who can communicate back and forth, make sure we understand what's going on over in education. Um, the, the communication is better generally right now with the interim superintendent. And I expect it will continue to be with whoever becomes the new superintendent. But there is, there is a value in there to have that communication back and forth. And if you look at the way the job spec was written, he does assist not only me in my office, but also the superintendent. So there's some back and forth there, but it has been.
Do you share that cost with the Board of Ed?
I'm sorry?
Is that cost shared with the Board of Ed?
Yes. It's, half of it is paid by my office and half is paid by education. That's proposed in this year's budget. Last year, all of the salary, but it was only for a portion of the year, went to the Department of Ed to pay.
Okay. Um, and the travel now, we're, I know your travel budget went up. Is there a reason?
How much is the?
Again, I'm going by the audited.
Yeah. So the budget is twelve thousand dollars a year. It stays at twelve. I think last year we spent less than that. That's to go to the mayor's conferences. If I've gone down to DC for some things, I've gone to, I think last year to a Brownfields conference. It pays for the travel related to that while, if I do that. So that, it's, well, it's budgeted at twelve thousand again. I'm not, not sure, as I sit here today, what I'm going to do over the next year. I haven't traveled extensively, but I do go to the mayor's, the US Conference of Mayors has a meeting in DC, which is very helpful. I've been to the Brownfields meeting. Um, and I'm not sure if I, I think I've been down to DC for one or two other things.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to go back to the other positions when I can find the papers. I just reserved the right to come back to it.
That's up to him.
But I have to find the numbers right in front of me because I'm not going to speculate. But I know I had them because I didn't write them down by guess. Let somebody else have a chance.
Further questions? Alderman Rodriguez?
Thank you for, first of all, I want to say thank you, all of you guys for coming. I know it's taken a lot of you guys time. But, you know, I'm not saying that this budget is bad, but if we could save more, save something to the constituents, I'm, I'm for it. You know, more eyes to look at this, the better. And that's why we looked through all this and probably give you an idea of what we're looking in and probably the constituents want to know what all this is all about for the four hundred and forty-six million dollars that we, that we go through. Um, Mr. Mayor, you said that you had that vacant filled yesterday. My question to it is, um, that same, that same position is for the executive secretary. It's the same amount of money as the new migrant aid. Is that any reason for the same amount of money for both, uh, persons? Is that any reason for the same amount of money for both persons?
Nope. I think that the person who's been in as the executive assistant hadn't gotten the increases over time and was entitled to making that money, so it went up to that number here. The new person I brought in brings experience with the federal government and in some of the areas that we're looking for to deal with some of the the community outreach and making sure that we're getting to where we need to be and bringing in the people that we need to bring in to make sure that everyone in the city is being heard. And it seemed commensurate with what his experience has been, and so that's why we set that number. The fact that the two of them happen to be at the same is, I don't want to say, it's coincidental that they're both the same, but I think that, given different jobs, but the nature of both of them, I think it's a fair number for each of them, so.
Okay. My second question is, I know you're, in your campaign, you said that you were going to put an education liaison to work. Now, is this position will be permanent? Or it's a position that you're going to work after the new superintendent comes in and see how that works out and remove that position or how that is going to...
It's not becoming a civil service position where it's going to be there, you know, unless it gets removed. It is, I guess for want of a better term, almost like an ad hoc position. We put it in there. There is a job spec that was approved by civil service. But that position has existed in the past. This is not the first time. He may be the third or fourth person to hold it. And I think over time, it's been filled. It's worked while it was necessary and periods of time it wasn't filled. But, you know, coming through with the experience that I had through the campaign and early in my term and some of the problems that we had, I thought it was important. And now, we're going into a period, as you may know, the Board of Ed is in the process of doing interviews. I think they're going to have a public forum the end of this month with three top candidates for the position of superintendent. And depending on how that plays out, we may have a new superintendent who's from out of the state. And so I think there's going to be a ramping up period, and it's going to be important at that point as well. But in the meantime, it has been a beneficial position for me to have someone whose job is to keep me fully apprised of what's going on in education so that I know what's happening over there. And I think things have been running much, much smoother in the last probably year than they had been for the year or two years before all of this happened, so. But if at some point it becomes unnecessary or, you know, doesn't seem to be adding value, then we'll, you know, look at getting, changing that up, so.
Okay. And now, I'm looking at, so you're paying the, your office will be paying 50, and the Board of Education will be paying another 50?
Correct.
So it will be a $100,000 position?
Correct.
Okay. That's all my questions for today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further questions? Alderman Zimmerman?
Thanks for recognizing me. Not to beat the salary thing to death about the aides, I'm just a little like...
Listen, I'll give you guys more money if it makes it easier.
No, no, no. I just want to understand, so I'm looking at the adopt, I'm sorry, I said $42,133.
You said $26,000.
All right. In fiscal year '24, it was $126,400. Fiscal year '25, it was $200,000.
For three aides, it was $126,400 for three aides, which means that the salary at that year would have been 40...
Two, something. That's the average that Alderman Alsa is saying. I think what I'm just getting at is, we increased our adopted number for the three aides by $20,000 every year, and that's where the question's coming up.
Without looking at it, and I have to look at the numbers back then, I don't have those back. We don't have those books here. So if in '23, this is pure speculation, but let's say there were three positions, but two of them were unfilled at the time for whatever reason. And Neil had filled some, then didn't fill some, you know, as he was going down. But like, one of the aides was carried at $60,000 this year or last year on the budget. Those numbers, they might have carried the vacancies at 40,000. They weren't filled, so it didn't, they didn't put the number there. I don't know. But for instance, what I can tell you is, last year, one of the aides' positions, the one that I filled yesterday, was carried in last year's budget at $60,000, but it was vacant. When it came time to fill it with the person that I wanted for the work that I wanted to do, the reasonable salary was the $88,000, so it went up by $28,000, so. Not that someone got a raise, it's just that no one had ever gotten the $60,000.
I understand, and I'm not questioning your judgment. It's just when we look at the overall number, it goes up by a grand.
Yeah, but you're, it would be, you're, when you look at, you're looking at averages of things that I don't, you know, that are apples and oranges. What I'm saying to you is, there were certain people who were working that fiscal year, right? There were aides in the office of the mayor in 2023 who are in the office of the mayor today. What was their salary in that fiscal year? They got a number for a salary then, and what is it today? Then I can tell you what the relative raise was for any individual person. But I don't think you can do this on averages. It doesn't work because there's variables in there that you're not accounting for when you do the averages.
But why do we want to know the salary?
I'm sorry?
Why do I want to know someone's salary? I'm just looking at what we're budgeting for them.
You're asking about raises?
I'm asking about the adopted number increase for the last two or three years, depending on what you want to answer. Like what you want, I know you weren't responsible for three years ago. Even between '25 and '26, we're $45,000 more. So I'm just trying to... And if that's what you want, then that's what you want. But I just, when we say that we didn't increase...
So out of the $45,000 budget from last year to this year, there's $45,000 in the aides?
Went from $200,000 to $245,000.
Right. One of those positions, which was carried last year at $60,000, was vacant.
Okay.
This year, it was filled yesterday. So starting in the fiscal year, that's an $88,000 position. So $28,000 of the 45 is attributable to that difference.
Okay.
There's also another $25,000 that's accumulated adjustments for the aides in that same period. So those two numbers together equal the $45,000. Actually, they come out a little bit more than that. But if you look at the raises that are in here, the difference is, it's 2,000, 2,200, there is one of eight, there's one of five to adjust salaries, nine, 10, $1,000.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the big number. That's on how you feel.
So the big numbers would be $28,000 for the filled position that was carried at 60 last year, and then $25,000 in adjustments for the other people in the office.
Okay. Who did we hire for the new aide?
Trayvon Diaz.
And is, he's not in government currently, right? He's going to be new to city government?
City government, correct.
And I think this is just an overall question, since it's starting with your office. It looks like the number for, I'm looking at you, Mike, sorry, the service and maintenance for the copiers, it looks like that number from '24 to '25 into '26 is, between '24 and '25 is doubled, and then we keep it for '26. And it happens to be across almost every department. Did we have like a change in our contract or anything with our copier maintenance?
No, the budget for '24, which you don't have in this column, was $4,500. The actual for '24 was only $2,276. We haven't increased the budgeted number. It's just you're seeing the actual for '24 and the budgeted for '25.
Okay.
But if you were to go back to last year's book, you would see that line item carried a budget of $4,500. We just didn't use all of it to maintain the equipment.
Got it, thank you. I think, oh, I didn't see vehicles in the expense line. How many vehicles do we have for your office? And do we have, is that a line itemed thing in your budget? Or does that fall somewhere else? How does that work?
Some of, the vehicles that come out of my office, for the most part, are assigned to the PD. They're police cars.
Okay. And how many are there? One, two?
There's three that are assigned to people, and then I think we have one or two that may be used as pool cars at this point. Two pool cars.
And the three that are assigned, is that like a full-time assignment?
It's assigned to me, to my chief of staff, and to my senior advisor.
And is it?
Full-time assignments.
Full-time, thank you. That's all I have, appreciate it.
Further question?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Alsa?
The fiscal year '25 was adopted at $200,000 for the same positions. That's where I'm coming up with the numbers, going from a $42,000 average. And that's the adopted budget.
All right, so here's what I can tell you at this moment. The budget that shows the '25 adopted budget at $200,000 was the first budget that I presented to you. The budget that would show the '24 fiscal year was adopted in June effective July 1 of '23, which was six months before I became mayor. So I did participate in that, and I voted to adopt that budget as the president of the Board of Aldermen, but it wasn't my budget to you. I inherited the mayor's staff at the time, and it shouldn't change the aide numbers on there. I think, well, there would have been one change in the aide at that point because when I became mayor, everyone in the mayor's office stayed. No one left. And I added two people to the office in December. On December 1 of 2023, the office expanded by two people. Nick Yermo became an aide in my office, and Joe Gary, which shouldn't show up in the numbers you're looking at as mayoral aides, but Joe Gary became my chief of staff. Now, that position is carried because, in fact, the charter references a chief of staff for the mayor. But I will tell you that Neil hadn't filled it for, I think, about two years. At least a year, maybe two. He simply didn't fill the chief of staff when Mac to Mac left. So to the extent that we, and I don't know, as I sit here, I'd have to look at it, whether the addition of Nick Yermo as an aide that year would have increased the number of aides. I don't think it did. But he most likely filled what would have been carried as a vacant position, and probably when he actually got a salary, which I think in the first year might have been $70,000, it would have been, maybe it was higher than what was being paid. But he didn't get an $80,000 raise from what was carried. So it may be that simply that position hadn't existed before. We brought him on, and that brought the number from 120 to 200 that year. That's the only thing I can think of as far as that number goes. But what happened in, you know, as I said, when I, the positions that I had last year when I presented a budget, I do not believe, and I'll go back and look, but my recollection is that we did not increase anyone's salary in my office. We added one aide last year, and I added the chief of staff. And that's all I did as far as personnel went in my office. But I will go back, I don't have the prior budget books in front of me. We'll go back and look at it.
I have it if you'd like to look at it. But I can say this.
But you also have, you don't have the backup. That's where the problem lies. So what you need to do is go back to the book that actually shows you the individuals who in the '24 budget held the position and what their salaries were, and relate that to the '25 budget. Look at who holds the positions and what their salaries are. That will tell you what the, any raise was between a person from one position to the other, and it would also indicate the addition of Nick to the office. That's what you really have to look at to get a handle on where you're trying to go. But I don't know how they were carried from the '23 or the '24 fiscal year, which was effective in July of '23.
Again, according to this book, '24 adopted budget was 126,400. '25 adopted budget was $200,000.
Right. And I just said to you, the only thing I know that I changed when I took office last year in the budget that I presented to you would have been the addition of one person in the office was Nick Yermo. So you added an entire person who is now getting paid. And that's roughly, he was paid, I think, $70,000 when he started. So that's, it's close to that $80,000. You're talking about a $75,000 differential. I can't precisely give you the numbers, but that's the best I can come up with.
Yeah, I'm trying to convey when I'm reading, and you can't see it without reading.
But I think we're talking apples and oranges, and that what I'm saying to you is, if you want to know about raises, which what you're asking, you're asking me how we could give people raises year over year. I'm saying you have to look at who held a job in the '24 budget. You can get that backup material, we'll get it to you. What that individual was paid, and then look at the '25 budget. What was that individual paid? The differential is the raise, if any, for that year. And then look at the '26 budget. I believe you're going to find that for all the people who were in office when Neil left and who still held those positions when I presented you a budget last year, the differential is zero. And if I'm wrong about any of those, I apologize now, we'll look at them, but I believe it was zero. I believe we added one person as an aides position at a $70,000 salary. And does that pick up the cost?
Again, you know, when we get this book that says adopted, and then we see this one for this year, and this was last year's, there's a page missing because in the...
There's not a page missing.
Well, not missing, but there's no accounting that...
No, listen, listen for a minute.
There's no individual names in here for me to do that with.
The budget book, because you have two books in front of you now. You have the budget that I presented, and then when we do these meetings, Sarah has given all of you this thing that's called the general fund backup documents. This is a separate book, it's not part of the budget, but it explains how the budget was arrived at. And this has all the individuals, every person who gets a city salary is listed in this book, along with all the other things that are happening. So you could go back. Now, if you were on the board in the '23 going into '24, and I can't remember whether you were here then, you would have gotten one of these. Whoever sat in those seats got them to look at it. But we can go back and find that, and then we can look at those numbers, and I'd be happy to have that discussion with you.
Right, the book that reads '25, '26 now, the backup document, has the names in it.
That's got the names in it.
The book that I'm looking at for '24, '25 has no names in it.
Because that's, because you're looking at the budget, not the backup. There was another book given out to the Aldermen that would have been, when they met just like this, that would have been the backup with all that same information. We've been doing this, I've been on the board for 25 years.
I understand.
25 years have been backup documents. They're a lot nicer today than what we used to get. They're bound and the rest. We used to get them in serial packages stapled, but they're the same information.
Again, the confusion is, you look at the adopted budget, and you look at the next adopted budget, and you look at the next one, and there's significant differences.
Right, but that's why I'm saying to you, you're comparing apples to oranges. You've got to compare apples to apples, and there's a way to do that. But just looking at the average in this book isn't going to get you where you want to go. I think, I do, as I'm listening to you now, I think the explanation is the one position accounts for $70,000 of that $75,000 differential. I don't know what accounts for the other five, I'll have to look at it.
Yeah, I'm having confusion too, because when I look at the number of positions and positions and positions are all the same, but the numbers keep climbing, so. I don't know how that happens. I must have missed that day in school.
Any further questions for the mayor? Seeing none, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Lopez, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize, I was actually trying to find my questions. Mr. Mayor, looking at the adopted FY '25 budget, under regular salaries, you had $1,116,000. Your FY '26 request is $1,226,000. So about $110,000 difference, right?
Correct.
You've also explained to us that the roughly $100,000 difference is the addition of 50% of the cost of the educational liaison, which actually equates to $50,000.
Correct.
The salary difference on the position that you just filled this week, The salary difference on the position that you just filled this week, which was about $23,000.
$28,000, I think.
$28,000. And then within the budget, you have about $26,000 in $25,572 in actual raises.
Correct.
So what you're asking us to approve is the $110,000 increase from last year's budget, and you have explained to us why that, that change has to occur.
Correct.
Thank you. I also want to make sure that Alderman also realizes that there are no pages missing in the budget book. There's, there are two budget books that we work with. This is the actual presentation that was provided to everyone here, and this is the details of the budget. So there's no page missing. Would you say, Sarah, that there's no page, there's, there's no pages missing, right? We have, we've all received these two different books to work with, right?
That's correct. I'm not aware that any pages are missing.
Okay. And I also want to remind this board that we approved the budget. We are the ones who approved this budget. When you're talking about fiscal year '22, fiscal year '23, fiscal year '24, and the actual fiscal year that we're on, we approved this budget. The elected 15 Aldermen approved the budget. The mayor proposes the budget. We have questions. Hopefully, we get answers. But ultimately, this body is responsible for the budget. So think about it. I personally would rather have a 1% surplus, considering the history, our history, considering the bankruptcy, considering the bond rating increases, and the financial management that we had for the last decade or so. I would rather have a little bit of a surplus than to have to tell the $110,000 residents that we're back in a deficit. Thank you.
Alderman Rodriguez.
I just want to say this to my colleague. There was, last year budget, it was 13 members that, well, 12 members that voted for this budget. Three of them voted no. So, yeah, we passed it, but not 15 people voted for the budget. That's the only thing that I want to say, just to be clear, that not 15 people voted for the budget, only 12.
Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Lopez, excuse me.
I just want to say to my colleague, thank you for reminding me that a couple of you did not vote in favor of paying our police department, our fire department, funding our Department of Education, providing services to our community, fixing the roads, sidewalks, and the parks. Thank you for reminding me that. Thank you.
I didn't know we were campaigning.
All right. Hey, guys. Hey, everybody.
I thought the campaign starts later.
Alderman Alcev, stop talking when no one's talking to you or asking you to speak, please, so we can have total control of the meeting. Alderman Rodriguez.
To my colleague here, it was not about voting no to those departments. It comes in the budget. We feel that it could have been better, and that's what we were fighting for. It doesn't mean that we don't care about all the departments that are here today and been here all this time. We just wanted to make it better, and working together is the only way that we, we do it, you know? So for you to say that we voted no for the police department, for the fire department, for all these communities that are getting this is wrong. So, you know, you have to understand, we are working together to do this better, and we have our opinions, and we have our ways to, to vote yes or no, and that's to everyone's opinions. You could have voted no in different things, but the budget comes in a whole package, and we voted for that package. So if we would have been selective, it would have been a different story. But because it comes in about the whole thing, and we didn't feel that everything was there that we were happy about it, then we voted no. So, you know, for you to say that departments, we don't care about those people is wrong. So, you know, just to understand that.
Okay. So let's get back on budget questions. Let's get back on the budget. All right, everybody? Anything further for the mayor? All right, Mayor, thank you. Okay, we'll go right into questions. Questions for the City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one question, and hopefully, maybe it's, I don't know if it's a mistake or not, but we're changing the position that a, the Secretary Administrator Assistant from $64,000 to $74,000 and a change. But I now, I see that that position now comes to a part-time position for that amount. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah. We, let me, can I, I'll answer in full. We had Angela Battle, 33 years of city service, who was retiring. So I needed an assistant clerk, because when I'm not there, someone has to be authorized to sign papers. And I'm there a lot, but sometimes I'm not. So we sat down and had a discussion with the mayor, and we came up.
That amount of money to a part-time, that amount of money to a part-time was kind of high, so that.
Part, I'm sorry. Did you say part-time?
Yes. It says part-time.
The assistant city clerk is part-time?
Yes.
No, she's not.
It says part-time here.
No, she's, she's full-time. It's by the charter of the city, my office is allowed an assistant city clerk. They've had one for years.
The paper, the book that I have here, it says.
It's just under 35 hours a week, so that's, I think, why it's reflected as part-time on the 100R. So it is considered a, it's just under 35 hours a week. So that's why I think they show it as part-time and not full-time.
Okay. So just to be clear, because I, you know.
The other positions in the office are 35-hour-a-week positions, but the appointed position of assistant city clerk is just under 35 hours a week.
So a full-time job is 40 hours, and.
We have, we have a lot of employees that work 35 hours a week that are full-time employees.
Okay.
Some are 40-hour-a-week employees.
Yeah, because, you know, it kind of put a red flag on me when I see a part-time position, especially that, that amount of money, $74,000, you know? And I'm not saying that she does a great job, and I'm not saying anything negative about her, but it kind of gives me a red flag that I saw from a full-time to a part-time, kind of, and increasing that money to almost $10,000.
I understand, but yes, it's not a 20-hour-a-week position, for instance. It's just under 35 hours.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Further questions? All the women's.
I'm just looking at your, I'm just looking at your goals and objectives over the years. So I mean, you have your, I'm a little shocked that you run this entire department on three people. Do you have a status on the vacancies that are in your office? Are they close to being filled, or are they actively being advertised?
With the three people we have now, we have a third in training, we're fine. We're catching up. We're good.
Just to clarify, the office does have four budgeted positions. They currently do have the four filled. At budget development time, when the budget was requested, they had one vacancy, but that has been filled, so they are fully staffed at four positions.
Okay. Mike, what are your top two challenges in your office?
Challenges?
Yeah.
The Alderman.
Okay.
No, the, the challenges is what you see here in the office of the, I'm sorry.
It's not just you.
The city clerk. I mean, we have, we, obviously, we walk very close with the Alderman. We do a lot of boards and commissions. This past, would have been last year, we had like 12 meetings with the charter revision. So it's, sometimes it's covering if we have two or three boards in one evening. Can be a challenge.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're, we're okay now. We're managing.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? I think Angela would have said all the walk-ons that we have to walk on, but I'll leave it alone. All right?
Everybody okay? Thank you, though.
Seeing no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, finance. And we will go right into questions when you Aldermen are ready and all the women Questions for Alderman Rodriguez?
Once again, thank you, guys, for coming. Appreciate your time.
Good evening.
I know you have an increase of $30,000 for, I guess, the water department or something to fill out, like a director or something. Could you explain a little bit about that $30,000, and if we already got a person to do that job that you're doing?
So that $30,000 is in regards to filling a role as the city's Water Pollution Control Primary Representative. I deal extensively with Jacobs, who is the contractor that operates and maintains the water pollution control plant, as well as the capital projects program for both the plant and the collection system. It's an additional role that I've been performing for many years, or several years, and last year it was incorporated into the budget. And it's, again, incorporated in this budget, but know that further down on the salaries page, you'll see that there's a credit of $30,000 to the General Fund Department of Finance budget, and that's just recognizing that that associated cost is actually paid by the Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund and not through the General Fund budget.
Got it. Yeah, because I, you know, I see it in here as an annual salary differential, and I know, I saw it, I saw that it was, you know, taken out at the reimbursement, and I just wanted to see if now that position is still going to be going the same way, or it's going to be filled with another person in the near future.
It's, would be at the discretion of the administration, but I, I think, you know, the, the program has been working very well. There are a lot of good things that are happening over at the Water Pollution Control Facility. Some substantial upgrades have been happening over the past few years. There's, the operations have been without incident, which was one of the driving reasons why Jacobs was brought in, and it's, it's working well.
My second question is, if everyone is looking at this book, the Board of Aldermen, page 69, says addition $25,000 to the fund, secure armored bank deposit pickups. We didn't have that before, but I know I see it in this budget now. Is there any reason for that?
Yeah, it's actually an amount that was also included in the adopted budget for '25. Currently, the armored car service for pickup of bank deposits is paid through an earnings credit with the banking institution that the city uses. They've indicated to us that they would prefer it at some point in time that we contract directly with the armored car service, and that hasn't happened yet, but when that day comes, we would need to fund this through the budget as opposed to utilizing an earnings credit from the bank.
So that's why this year it's in the budget?
Again, we would anticipate it. It, it hasn't happened to date in this current fiscal year, but as we go into fiscal year 2026, we do anticipate that that's going to come about.
Okay. So that means that we saved it in the 2025 to this, to now, but you figure that this year it might be in use?
Correct.
Okay. Give me one sec. Yeah, the line item 5892 says, the reason for this one is, if you look at it, and the actual year 2024 was 712, 2025 budget was 5,000, and this year again, 5,000, for reimbursement for travel expenses related to training classes and local candidate meetings. Are we still doing the trainings, or are we utilizing this money?
Yeah, so in 2024, there, the Lawson Conferences, there's available, in Lawson is the city's financial management system, and there are conferences that happen with Lawson, both on a national basis as well as on a regional basis. And in 2024, being that the amount that was expended was only $712, it would have been only the regional conferences that were attended. But we do, I think it's important to leave that as a available option when it makes sense, you know, based on the programming that's available at the national conferences to be able to attend.
Okay. Well, we haven't attended to those yet, to those conferences?
Not in 2024.
Okay.
We have in prior years. It just didn't happen in 2024.
Got it. My last question is, I see a kind of big jump on overtime for your department. It's on page 70. 2024 was $13,840, and this, last year, $20,000, and this year, $20,000. Are we doing a lot of overtime through the, through the year to cover the cost?
I think, I'm sorry. Yeah, there, the way the holidays fall in, in certain years, particularly with the, the President's Day holidays, there's, it, it puts a pressure on the payroll department in particular to have to work overtime in order to process the payrolls on a shortened work week. So when, the way the President holidays are set up, the holidays generally fall on both a Monday and a Tuesday. Those are the two biggest processing days for payroll of the, each week. So it's generally weekends and overtime that comes about as a result in order to ensure that we're processing the payrolls timely.
How many people you have in the payroll department that deals with the, with this
Eight overall payroll positions.
Eight? So those eight people work overtime during the time that we have these holidays?
Yeah. A couple of those positions are management-level positions, so they don't, they're exempt from overtime, but the rest are white-collar employees that, through their collective bargaining agreements, are required to be paid overtime.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further questions?
Just around or something?
Yeah, so actually, at your last Board of Alderman meeting, there were three job descriptions that were approved for my office. There has been a plan in place for the past couple of years. We have recently gotten to the point of establishing those job descriptions. They are higher-level positions that is, is tied to establishing a succession plan for some long-term, higher-level positions in the department. And so those three positions are currently vacant. They were budgeted for, in the 2025 budget, they're budgeted or proposed to be funded in the '26 budget, but there's an anticipated savings that's incorporated. If you look at the bottom of the page 64, there's a savings through vacancy of $263,000. So overall, you know, this, the, the plan is for this to have a net zero impact on the number of positions in the department. I, I will highlight, though, that the overall position count in the department did increase from '27 to '28. That one position is an administrative associate, too, that we had a retirement during the past year in what was a grant-funded position, and that has now been converted to a white-collar position and is incorporated into the department's budget.
Okay. There's a title switch on a position that financial manager became an assistant manager, accountant?
So tied to those three positions that I, I just referenced, one of those positions was originally contemplated to be. was originally contemplated to be titled the Assistant Manager of Accounting and Reporting. In preparation for this year's budget and in putting together the job description for this position, I felt it would be better titled to be an Accounting and Financial Systems Manager. Again, the Lawson Financial Management System is the, the bedrock of our financial accounting and reporting, and I wanted to be able to tie some responsibilities in support of the Lawson system into this position. So that was the reason for the title modification.
It, it's basically a budget wash, one
Correct.
Versus the other, just
Correct.
Better title.
That's correct.
And on page 69, item number 575200. You have an explanation there that you're replacing aged equipment?
In regards to 575200, the office equipment line item?
Office equipment, yep.
Yes, we're, with the staff in the office, we try to budget for, on a rotating basis, replacing computers, their, their monitors and, and other components of, of office equipment. And this funds a, a, a replacement program on a, a rotating basis over a period of a number of years.
This must be another day I missed in school, because I got, you got three monitors off the seat at 1515, and $500 for cabinets, and yet you got 7,500, as it adds up here. It just didn't add up to me.
Yeah.
Under the explanation of that line item.
Yeah, it's just a, a representation of what some of these items cost, but there's, you know, the, the prices vary depending on the type of equipment that you're replacing. And this is another example where, you know, the budgeted amount was 7,500. We try to be cognizant, you know, year in and year out, with working within our budget, and in fiscal year 24, the amount was 3,450 that was actually spent. And just be, it's just an example that just because the amount is there available to be spent, if we don't need to spend it, we're not going to spend it.
It was just a discrepancy. I said, how does this work? You know, again, I came up with a different number than what you were saying, and I didn't know if there's something I'm missing here or not.
No, again, it's just, it, I, wasn't, the intent wasn't to provide a, a specific item-by-item cost breakdown
Okay.
To arrive at the 7,500.
Okay. I'm okay. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Further questions? Alderman, Chairman.
Thank you for recognizing me. I had a constituent ask me, and I didn't know the answer to this, the 7-8 million dollars that we got in ARPA, like I understand we had a lot of projects, but do we collect any interest on that? Like, did that go into an account where we could have had interest on it? Like, how did that work?
Yes, we did accrue interest on it, and that interest was allocated to the Capital Improvement Fund to add to the unallocated available funds within the Capital Improvement Fund. So it's, it's money that, you know, going forward is, is a component of funding the, the future year's capital budgets, particularly the one that we're going into 2026.
Okay. And do we have that somewhere? Do we have that number somewhere that, what the interest looked like? Because I really don't know what that even looks like.
Yeah, I mean, fortunately, you know, it timed out, you know, for the period of years that our, our normal interest rates on liquid cash, you know, was in a, a solid 4% range. So on an annual basis, you know, it was, it was producing, you know, you know, $3 million.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. I was just reading your goals and objectives, too. So the ERP system that we're transferring to that cloud suite platform, can you just kind of give me a, why are we doing that? What are, what are the efficiencies that your office is hoping to accomplish with that? And what's the timeline?
So the current software, the Lawson software, the version that we're on, support will be ending. They originally were projecting that it would be ending in the, I believe, 2027 timeframe. They have extended that out to 2030, but it's been described to me that upgrading from our current version to the cloud suite version is on the level of, of almost a, a system replacement. So we're, we're starting at this stage of the game to prepare the beginning planning process, if you will. We will need to hire a consultant that would assist with preparing for the conversion. And we want to make sure that we leave ourselves enough room at the end of the day so that we're not closing in on that 2030 period when support ends. So we would anticipate, over the next year or so, we're going to dive into the planning process, and in the next two to three years, you know, we'll be going through this conversion.
Okay, so we won't need a, do we need a consultant budgeted for this year, or you think this year's planning?
So we have been starting to fund over the past two years in the capital budget requests, money for the, for the consultant. There is an additional request in this year's capital budget in order to, again, ultimately fund the contract once we go out to RFP and hire a consultant for this project.
And then my, I think my last question was for the ARPA projects that we have. I know we have to be, we have to close out all funding by December 31st of this year, is that correct?
Of next year, December 31st of 2026.
Oh.
Although we are hopeful that we will be well in advance of that date in having expended all the funds.
All right, see. All right, thank you very much.
Further questions? Here are none. Thank you.
We have Tom D'Stasio, our assessor here tonight, and Anne Paluas, our assistant assessor. Just so the board knows, Tom is new, he wasn't here last year at Budget Development Time. He started with us back around the beginning of September.
Good evening.
Good evening. So actually, Tom, I'm, I'm going to start it off. So for about the last 10 years, I, I think the number one, number, top five complaints out of the residents of the City of Waterbury are the out-of-state plates. Leaves a tremendous hole in our budget. I've been active and actively pursuing it since 2016, state level, got some laws passed, but I've asked the previous assessor, our interim assessor, and this assessor, and you I'm asking now, why there's not some kind of Excel program that shows the house on the street and no vehicles registered to that house on the street? Why we don't run it? Actively work with capital tax recovery now? It's a, it's a frustration that's, that's voiced, I'm sure, to all of us. Been voiced from me for 10 years, if not longer, that, you know, I'm paying this much money on, thankfully, the taxes have come down slightly to middle rate through the state, but it's an ongoing problem that looks, to me, and to some others, that it could be addressed. I know New Haven now is starting to act on it, and they're aggressively pursuing it because of everybody's budgets tightening, money from the state, money from the federal government tightening up. So I'm asking you, I don't want to blindside you, you're brand new, so if it's something that you can look into for us, or for me, and I believe for all of us, we'd really appreciate it. It's a, it's an ongoing problem that, it's frustrating, and it's, it's not fair to a lot of taxpayers in the city, so.
I hear where you're coming from. I think if it's possible through the, you know, IT end of it, because we get everything from the state on the motor vehicles, so they, you know, if that could be converted into an Excel sheet somehow, that is something you could do, and then search by street, or at least, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's just something, you get the complaint on one something Woodbine Street, that there's two New York cars there, they've been there for three years. You call the tax assessor, you call somebody, and, and it, it should be very obvious, see that there's been no car tax bills sent to that location. A letter should be generated from the assessors to that house and saying, hey, per whatever statute it is, you need to, you know, register your vehicles in Connecticut, or, or, you know, we, to avoid back payment and everything else. Some system set in place to where, at least if we start the process, maybe it'll give, you know, a 20, 30% boost in, in people registering and trying to comply, so. It just, I, I, again, I'm, I'm not trying to blindside you, I just think that the frustration's been there for a long time for a lot of people, and I think it's time to really, we start acting aggressively on, on some of the issues in the city, so. And that, I apologize, I didn't, I just wanted to start off by saying that, because I do think it affects our budget tremendously, so. And I would thank you with that. Any questions?
Alderman Alsop.
Yes, you weren't here for last year's budget, that's what I'm going to hear about, but, um, on page 71, 529001, cars, car allowance, has gone up significantly from the 24 budget to now the 26 budget. It's, it, it went up last year, too, but the same amount. But again, a $12,000 plus increase, and you're asking for the same this year?
Um, yes, we have to go out and look at properties, as you know, and not just real estate, but personal property as well. We do have, you know, myself and Anne, and then three other people that also go out. So we, it's all by mileage, so we just want to have that covered when we go out and look at the properties and make sure that everybody's doing what they're, they're supposed to with the vehicles.
Can you anticipate what 25 budget will be? If we have a surplus or a deficit in that 12,000, I'm sorry, 13,000?
It's hard to, because we get phone calls to come out. We work on the permits, it depends how many permits we get. It's hard.
Do you know how close you are at this point to the budget for the last couple of months of the year?
Um, I, I do not.
Okay. It's just such a significant difference in a couple of years that, I know gas didn't go up that much.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if we added personnel, or a different way of going around, and whatever.
Yeah, ever it's the same way of going around, I think we have a few more people that are doing it, and, you know, we get called out. It could, could end up less than that, you know, hopefully.
Okay, just, just trying to figure out how it got from one to the other, that's all. Um. What I have to keep looking here. The postage is another huge jump, from the actual of 9,822 in '24, up to 28,6, now up to 30,820.
Yeah. Most of that's the assessment change notices. We did the phase ends, so we're sending those out every year for every property. So that's the significant change, plus postage going up.
Yeah. It's just the, the greater volume now because of every year we're having to send out a new assessment?
Uh, yeah, we will be sending them out again this year, because it'll be the last step of the phase end, and then be a year off, and then you go into reevaluation again.
I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the same reason for the big jump in the print?
Uh, yes, yeah, the printing and mailing, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you for your recognition. I just want to clarify, and it may be helpful for my colleagues as well, I know that there have been references to the previous budget years, but I do, just to clarify, the totals that are listed in the backup documentation are the actuals previous to this year and what's proposed for next year. So when we're looking at the previous years, we're looking at not what was budgeted, quote unquote, but what the actual expenses are. So there's a, a good chance, and very likely, that after we get the, after we get the complete totals from '25, and we look future, we look to the future, it will be more in line and more consistent with what we've previously spent. We probably, we understand that there's, you know, an increase, especially with the notices that are being sent. I know I've received, you know, those notices, we all have, those of us who own property in the city. But I just want to kind of remind us all, remind myself, that when we're looking at the previous years, specifically '24, '23, '22, we're looking at the totals, and we're not looking at the, an actual budgeted amount until we see last year's '25, or this current year, and then what's projected for next year. Hope I didn't confuse anyone, but I, I just wanted to kind of clarify that, because I, I do, I think without really understanding that and making note of that, the increases in the amounts could be startling. But if you see that the previous years were what was actually spent, not necessarily what was budgeted for, I think it helps paint a clearer picture.
Thank you. And Alderman Mosley, to that point, when we are developing the fiscal year '26 budget, we are also looking at where the expenses are currently in the fiscal year. So like you're saying, fiscal year '25, we are looking at where we are in actual expenses, but the book only shows you what was the adopted amount, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? Alderman Rodriguez.
I just want to ask a question. Going back to the car allowance, those are your vehicles that you guys are using, personal vehicles that you're using for, to go visit this. Now, being your own vehicle, and you guys are working for the city at the moment, how the insurance goes with you guys on related to using your personal vehicle if you have an accident? Who covers that? Because I don't think that an employee from the city who should be using a personal vehicle to do businesses for the city. That's my personal opinion. Why you guys think about that?
So in order to be eligible for a mileage reimbursement, the employee that's using their vehicle for work business is required to maintain certain, certain levels of insurance requirements in the event that there's an accident. So it would actually be the policy of the employee that would pay for any damages. But the, the, the IRS establishes an annual mileage reimbursement rate, and that rate times the miles is really designed to cover not only the wear and tear on the vehicle, the gas cost for the vehicle, but also for the insurance as well.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. My second question is, on page 76, if you look at page 76, you requested almost $85,000 in Yukon accommodations and aerial imagery services. Could you elaborate why you requested it and why it's not in the budget?
Yes. With, with the aerial, it's, it's, they take, you know, picture of everything from up above, and compares from flight to flight. They fly twice a year, and then you could set in the computer, anything that's been added that's more than 400 square feet will come up. come up. And so, you know, sometimes people doing things without permits, you'll be able to pick that stuff up. Sometimes you'll pick up stuff that is, you're not currently getting. I had it in the previous job I was in. It's excellent. And so we thought, you know, we would see if you want. They definitely help us in our job and it would help add to the grand list.
Sarah just wants to comment on the rationale behind what was done with the budget.
Sure, yes. So total, we cut $85,000 and the 50, I'm sorry, it was 35,000 that was requested for the aerial imagery services and 50,000 for commercial property inspection services. Those were two new items and unfortunately, across the board, throughout all different departments, we weren't able to fund new items for the most part in many different departments, just trying to really control the mill rate and contain budget growth. We are interested, I think, in both of the items and we'll continue to evaluate and see if there's any funding opportunities. But they're not included in the proposed budget right now. But again, that doesn't mean we won't be looking to try to fund them in the future. But again, just another very difficult budget development cycle. Trying, we were really trying to maintain current services and unfortunately, there were a number of new requests in various departments that we were unable to fund.
Because hearing from what the assessors is telling me, it will be more accurate and profitable to use this system. So the, at least the 50,000 that they're, you know, I don't, we haven't, I don't know anything yet for the Yukon accommodations, but at least for the aerial system, isn't would that pay forward when we use the system?
And the other thing is, I believe this is an annual expense, correct? Yeah. So that would be $35,000 every year. So again, just with trying to fund what we already had was our main goal and for now, we weren't able to fund some additional items. But we will, like I said, continue to evaluate it, see if we have any other options for other funding sources. And we do think it's, you know, a worthwhile program to have.
Yeah, because for me, looking at this, especially how he presented it, I think it will be beneficial for the city in a way that, like my colleague is saying over here, you know, with the cars being out of state and the people doing some work without permits and stuff like that, this will benefit the building department, the police department. So it's not just going to benefit one, one department. It will benefit the whole city in a, in a way that we will gain more revenue from that system. And that's my, my personal opinion from what I just heard.
Correct.
And what will be the Yukon accommodations? What that entitles?
I'm sorry?
The Yukon accommodations, what does this entitle that you put it in, you know, it's not, you asked for it, but it's not in the budget?
Oh, well, that's, the department requested $2,400 in the professional services account. I believe that is included in the proposed budget. The only things cut from that professional services account were the two new items. And I know the staff from the department attends classes through Yukon, so the 2,400 funds those.
The 35,000?
No, the Yukon accommodations is 2,400. The 35,000 is the aerial imagery services. So the program we were just talking about has an annual cost of $35,000 a year and then the commercial property inspection services at 50,000. So the $85,000 that was cut from that line are the last two items, the aerial imagery services and commercial property inspection services, which were both new requests for fiscal year '26.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you. Welcome to Waterbury. We're excited to have a full-time assessor. So thank you. All right. Let me one second to get back to the page that was, I had a question and I had it answered for me, so that's good. Looking at your goals and objectives, it says that you're going to implement new technology to allow superior, superior data collection. All right, we talked about this, using aerial imaging and real estate personal property assessment. What other technology besides the aerial assessment, because we didn't, we just said we didn't approve that, right? We don't, we don't have the funds for that. We're not allocating funds towards that yet. So what are we doing for the new technology this year?
That was the new technology and it would, it would help tremendously. You could also measure with it heights of buildings, stuff like that, story height. That's a little hard to do even, you know, when you're out there, when measuring, trying to figure out, you know, the difference between the floors, stuff like that on the commercial buildings. So that would help tremendously, you know, with, it's very, you know, very technical. And you can measure right on the screen. There's different angles you can take. I can only say this because I have used it and I found it to be a great tool.
So right now, what do we do?
Measuring it physically.
We go out there with a tape measure and we measure?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, with your goals and objectives, are you graded, are these your goals? Like I was in corporate, so I had goals and objectives and if I completed them, I got my annual raise or whatever. Is this going to affect your performance in your department if we're not giving you money to do what's on your goals and objectives?
Uh, we would continue doing what we're doing and, you know, this would help us for sure. It would speed things up.
Okay.
So I think that would make us more efficient for sure.
Yeah, I wasn't sure because I've never actually asked HR that, so I didn't know. Okay. So that's not going to affect, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're keeping everything in line. All right. So implement electronic filing and personal, implement electric, electronic filing of personal property declarations. Sorry, I can't speak tonight apparently. So we're, this says you're going to implement it. So is it not, right now, we don't have an electronic filing system? And how are you going to implement it?
Personal property, we send the declarations out every year. So that's how we're implementing it and what is sent back, what's not sent back, we have to look at what they did the year before. There's a penalty involved. That then turns around and we send notices to all the folks that get personal property accounts. So they know what their assessment is and they know that they can appeal.
Okay.
And we do have some software that compares businesses. So that's the technical end where, you know, you can compare the barber shops or the hairstyling salons, grocery stores. So that, because if they don't file, the assessor files for them with the penalty. This will give us an idea by the size of the store, what similar, you know, businesses are at, we put it in at that with the penalty.
So right now, this is working?
Pardon me?
Right now, the system works, this electronic filing system? Okay. You were talking, they were talking about in here, continuously supporting corporate counsel with court cases. Can you just give me a recap of like what kind of court cases are people challenging you on their assessment or what does that mean?
Exactly what you said, people challenging on their assessment. They go to the Board of Assessment Appeals. They're not happy with what they got there. They go to court. Once they get to court, you know, we deal with corporation counsel on bringing them up to speed on how we came up with the assessment and how we're going to defend it.
And how is your department doing right now with the amount of appeals that are happening? Because I'm assuming there's been an increase in the appeals, right?
Yeah, there has been since the revaluation, of course, and some of those are still, you know, in process because the court's going to only take so many. And we're working with corporation counsel on each of them as they come up, as they get assigned.
Okay. It says right now, we're going to implement an RFP process to choose providers for the 2027 reevaluation. So right now, we're on our, I think we're on our last year of our five-year phase in? Was that fourth year, fifth year?
Third year.
Third year?
Three.
Oh, we have two more. All right. So we're going to reevaluate in 2027?
Correct.
And so if we reeval and the prices change, say they reduce, then that's going to change our phase in, correct? Like the phase in pricing, all that kind of changes?
Uh, next year will be the last year of the phase in.
Okay. When are we going to try to choose a provider? Is that going to happen this year?
Uh, next year, we'll put out the RFP and, you know, because you want to get them a year before the revale. So.
Okay.
Next year.
I had one more question. The Quality Data Services, I think they're a vendor. I've seen significant increases over the past few years from them. Can you just kind of brief me on what they do for your department?
Uh, Quality does, you know, we're connected with the tax office to create the tax bills. Their software takes our assessments, adjustments, everything we do as far as the numbers is in there for adjusting an account. And that gets transferred over to the tax office as well. So they, you know, they know. It's almost immediate. We do it, they see it.
So it's a software that, it's a software where we input information and then we share across our departments? Is that how that works?
Yes.
So our actuals, I know we're, the actual versus budgeted, I hope we're not having astounding differences, right? We shouldn't really have that big of difference.
Just wanted to comment on the quality data and I'm not sure if, when you said significant increases, there are quality data expenses in the postage and printing accounts that we were speaking about earlier. So those increases are related to the notice of assessment change that have now had to go out each year of the revale phase in. So in that respect, quality data, there are significant increases shown, but the actual software program and the other expenses, I don't know that they've changed that drastically. So I just wanted to point that out. When you see it under the increased notices category, that's what it is. It was the, because quality data actually sends out those notices for us. So they pay for the postage and pay for the printing.
Yeah, that's a good call out. Thank you. So we went from $1,600 for the actual in '24. I know that's a while ago. We're at $16,800 budgeted for '25 and now we're at $19,000 budgeted for '26.
Correct. So in fiscal year '24, I believe we were able to pay for the increases within the revaluation project, which was set up as a capital project. But for the current year, fiscal year '25, and then for next year, we needed to budget for those expenses within the general fund.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think those were all my questions. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Tajalde.
Hey, how are you on the site? Nice to see you. So I just have one, one question. Under, on page 76 of the backup documents for professional services, we are continuing to budget $8,000 for the NADA pricing guidelines, but the car taxes have shifted to an MSRP value. I believe, do we, are we still doing that because by the time this grand list comes out for the car taxes, it'll still use the NADA values and this is the last time we're doing it or?
We are using the MSRP values for the bill coming out in July.
Okay.
Yes.
So then why are we budgeting 8,000 to purchase NADA pricing guides?
Uh, there are still, still other things that have to be priced besides the cars. So we use them for that. Plus the MSRP is in their books as well.
Oh, it's combined?
They have it in there.
They offer both?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. That was, that's my only question. Thank you.
Okay. Further questions? All the women's gentlemen?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. President. Two things. Can you consider using city vehicles? Just throwing that out there. I don't know if we have, our city vehicle, Sarah's on it.
Sure. No, we, we don't have city vehicles available for the assessor's office right now. We would have to purchase new vehicles to be assigned to the office.
Okay.
So right now, we, this happens in a number of departments where some employees use their personal vehicles and they get reimbursed for their mileage. They track their mileage and get reimbursed.
Okay. And then just following up on a question that's been asked, I think almost monthly from Alderman Elsaff, the tax exempt properties, are we working on a list of properties where we're not collecting taxes but the city owns? Or can you work on a list and send it to us?
Um, we would be able to run reports to come up with the properties that are tax exempt. There's more, just a full exemption for like a nonprofit type of thing?
That the, the.
Nature of the use of the property, churches and such.
Okay.
Hospitals, well, one of the hospitals right now, the other is taxable because of the nature of the ownership. And then there's properties that the city owns, which obviously by definition are not taxable.
Sure.
For the city. So we are working on putting those lists together to get them to Jack. So.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Any further que, oh, Sarah, you're good. Any further questions? All right, here are none. Thank you. Next up is revenue collection, but we're going to take a, we're going to take a five-minute recess. So, all right, and we'll get, we come back, it'll be revenue collection. Okay. We'll call the meeting back to order. We have revenue collection. Questions for revenue collection?
Let's see.
Any questions for revenue collection?
Please stand by. I gotta look.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Thank you for coming. I just want to say thank you for being here.
All right. Alderman Rodriguez.
How you doing? Once again, thank you for staying this late. One of the questions that I hear a lot and, and from constituents is when people, when people come to a collection, when they, you know, pass that timeframe, they cannot pay it online. They have to come present to, is there any reason for that? That person cannot pay online their taxes when they're delinquent?
By statute, I, I have to collect in order. So if you're three years behind, people usually try to pay the, the most current bill that's less. And by statute, I have to, I have to collect in order. So I can't stop people from paying the older, make people pay the oldest bills first. So, so if they're two or three years behind, they have to come in and pay. I mean, if they're current, they can pay online, but I, we'd be making transfers all over, moving money all over. It would be like too much to do.
So the, the system doesn't, the, the system that we have currently right now doesn't block the ones that are current and, and do you pay the last, the, the past delinquent taxes?
No, if they're delinquent, they get flagged.
Flagged completely.
Because a lot of people have two, three years, four years, and, and, you know, and they have to pay in order. That's, that's the.
Because that's the, the question that I hear a lot, that they say, yeah, we have to come in and we can't pay it online, and it should have been, you know, they, they want to pay it. It's not, you know, from the people that I heard, they want to pay it, but they have to, you know.
But usually people, if they see that the current bill is no interest on it, or, you know, it's, it's current, they want to pay that one first. And that just, you know, I can't, I can't have that. I have to, they have to pay it in order.
And then delinquent tax is at 15% or?
No, the, I mean, it's, it's one and a half percent a month interest, but it's like 18% annually.
Depending on how long.
But when, once it goes to collections, it's 15, there's an additional 15% one tax, once tax server gets it.
And your department does a collection for the delinquent taxes after they go to collection?
Yeah.
Or is a third party?
Well, both. Like, we can take it, they can pay the collection agency or they can pay us directly. But we don't take partial payments if they're paying us directly, because there's.
And, and I'm going with this is, so when the 15% of that collection, we collected, we, they still, we still collect the 15%, even we're not using the third party.
Right.
And if the third party collects it, they get the 15%?
Right.
Okay. I'll have more questions in a few. I just want to have other colleagues. I just, I just wanted to start the conversation, but those, those are things that I, I heard from the constituents, I just wanted to ask you that question.
Because we have to put restrictions on the, the online. You know, it's, it's a service, but it's, you know, it has to, you know, if you're delinquent, it doesn't work, you know?
Okay. That's for now, Mr. President.
Okay. Further questions? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me. Hello, how are you? The police extra duty security, can you help me understand that?
Well, that's.
Kind of, I already kind of understand it, but.
We used to pay for extra duty. And, and we keep it in the budget, but now we have a police officer there full-time. But if they take, if they take him out, or, you know, we'd have to go back to paying for extra duty. So we don't, you know, we haven't used him in the last couple of years since he's been there. And hopefully they, you know, hopefully they keep him there, because that, that really helps, having someone there. But, but we used to pay for extra duty.
And that's down at the desk, right? In the lobby?
Yeah.
Okay. And he, the police officer used to stand in the collections department instead?
Yeah, during collections, we'd, we'd pay for extra duty. Have like at least an officer in the morning, an officer in the afternoon, so we'd have police presence there.
Okay. Do you get many incidents through tax season?
Once in a while, not, not, not too often, but, but it's nice to, you know, it's good to have a police officer there.
Sure.
It's more for the taxpayers also. Some people come in with cash. I mean, they're coming in elderly with cash, you know?
Okay.
It's for their protection also, that, you know, more than, you know, not just ours, but having someone there, you know, when people are carrying all their cash.
Okay. Can you explain why we need PO boxes? How does, how does that process work with the PO box?
Well, one PO box is, we use lockbox. So one PO box is Hartford. So we, all the, all the current bills get mailed to Hartford, and then they get, Webster Bank does it. Then they get sent up to, I think they do it outside of Boston now. So they, they pick it up there and they process overnight. And then we have three PO boxes here. One's for returns, 950 is usually for return. So then we have one that's used for parking tickets and, you know, but, but the main one is our, is a Hartford one.
Okay, is that, that's a usual process that like every city kind of has a PO box for each? Okay.
Excuse me, Frank, can you just put the mic a little closer?
Oh, sure.
That's right, no problem. We just, they, we're having trouble hearing you.
We were looking at the, the, I call it in my notes, the shuffling of the roles, but it looks like some of the customer service roles were moving to a delinquent collector associate role.
Right. We had, we, we had to, they, they work at a higher level in the whole, when they converted to all CSR's years ago, like the ones that were there were paid at a higher level. But now everyone's equal. But, but the women downstairs, like they do liens and warrants, and they, they work at a higher level. And, you know, we had to, we had to pay them to keep them. So I, I've lost so many people over the years. I have people, like in, every, like five different cities have people that worked for me in the past. West Haven tax collector, Beacon Falls tax collector. I just lost someone to Hartford a couple of months ago. I mean, every, you know, I, I train people and they leave, so we have to be able to, we have to be able to pay them.
So did we move, are we moving our customers, some of the customer service representatives to the delinquent colle, I don't know who gets paid more. I'm not, I can't do the math off the top of my head. Are we moving some of our customer service reps to the delinquent collection associate?
Right. We have five positions, there were, we have five positions we're upgrading from customer service to delinquent collections.
Okay. I have in my notes 22 positions, not 19 positions. Where are the three that we're saving? So I have a feeling that's in the savings and turnover. On our main book, it's page 147. In our backup book, it's page 84. I think when we added up all of the positions in general, it was 19. So we, it was, excuse me. It was 22 in all of the columns. So we weren't quite sure where the three in the savings was coming from. I don't know if that was a typo or a misunderstanding on my part.
We'll be eliminating three of the CSR positions. There's the promotional opportunity with the delinquent collection associate. So we're anticipating that there will be six delinquent collection associate positions. And then seven CSR's, I believe. So there had been a few vacant CSR positions in the current year. So when you could see down below the three, three positions are minus out, the savings through vacancy and turnover, that would be eliminating through attrition the three CSR positions. So we'll have six at the higher level, delinquent collection associates, and then less customer service reps once all of the position changes are made.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What are your top two challenges in your department right now? I have, I try to ask everybody this.
Right now, it's staffing. I mean, I'm showing the, an accountant two, that I have, I have two accountant twos that aren't filled right now. Well, we changed it to senior delinquent collection associates, but they're both vacant right now. I had one accountant two work for a day and one accountant two work for like three months and, you know, that's, I had, we're having really trouble filling them, you know, filling the positions. That's the.
And are, are they actively posted and marketed?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But, but they're, we're having trouble filling them though.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Alderman Rodriguez.
I just have one question. Probably Sarah will help me on this one. On page 88, we have the legal notices. Are we still doing that with the new company that they, since Waterbury Republican is not no longer here, are we still using the new?
Yes. So when we're required to publish legal notices, they are still being published in the Republican American.
That's only a newspaper that we use in, in Waterbury?
Yes, I believe for the, for these legal notices for the tax office, what they're required to publish, I believe they only use the Republican American.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further questions? All the women's chairman.
Just very quickly, thank you again. The Sterling Security Systems, our actuals versus what we've budgeted this year and what we had last year for the seven, our actual was seven, $780, and we're budgeting $7,000. Is that a change in contract, or was that just something covered? Was it covered somewhere else?
Well, the, well, the $5,000 was police extra duty. And Sterling's was 2,000. But that's for our panic buttons.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Okay, that's for the panic button.
That's for our panic buttons.
And so it went from 780 to 2,000. Is that a change in contract, or that's just budget versus actual?
Yeah, they, they went up.
Okay. In our contract. All right. And the panic buttons are at the cashier locations?
Every station has them, and I have one in my office, so I can watch the cameras and hit the panic button. I have one on my wall.
Okay, thank you.
Further, Alderman Elsef.
Yes, on page 87, two line item, 53007 and 5433,000. There's contracts for somebody called QDS. One says increase in annual fee, and it's 7,500 for each year. Is, is that the increase is 7,500, or is that the actual contract?
No, that's the contract. Because, because QDS is our software company, Quality Data Service, and the maintenance contract through that is running our online system. Because they, any online payments are made on their, on their server, because we don't, so, so our server is separate from theirs. We, we, we send all our data to them. And so, so when payments come in, they're not, there's, there's like no chance of getting corrupted, that, so Quality Data runs our whole online system.
But there's another, again, there's two line items. One's for 5,000. That's under maintenance contracts. And the other's for 75, 7,600 this year request. They're, they're both on page 87. And different line items.
The 5,000 for legal services, or?
It says under description of goods and services.
Oh, okay.
QDS, 5,000 last year, 5,000 this year, and nothing from '24. But then above, they're getting 7,600 this year. So I'm just trying to, just, you know, find out what the difference is in the two, why, why two numbers for the same company doing goods and services. number, why, why two numbers for the same company doing goods and services?
Well, we have a couple of different service contracts with them.
Frank, you saying you have two separate, there's two separate contracts?
Yeah, there's a, the, there's a service maintenance contract on the computer system itself, the Q D S software. And then within the tax office, uh, with each of the, the cashiering stations, there's validators that, there's also a service maintenance contract on the validator machines.
So to piggyback off of Alderman Alsop's question, did that just, it looks like it just started last year.
Yeah, that's.
Is that something that we just started as far as the new contract? Is that the second one? Because it looks like, it appears it's not in 2024. It appears that it shows up in 2025's budget, last year's budget as a first year item.
When it was, let, last year we combined everything, because we had too many accounts. So we like put them together and got rid of a lot. Like in the past, it was a lot more different accounts and we kind of combined computer services and service contracts. We kind of put it all to, you know, where, where it would make it a little easier to come for.
Alderman Alsop, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering, are they servicing the computers that they charge you to service with? I mean, you know, you paying for a service and then you got to pay for the servicing the computers that you're paying them to have? That's.
So I'm going to jump in again off a piggyback. I would assume some of it's, um, contract with licensing fees, correct? It's not just service, would it be contract license fees or is it two separate services?
No, I think it's two separate services.
Okay.
And then, then it be loaded, it says validator for repair, Q D S repair contract.
Right, right.
So I mean, you got three lines you're paying these people under.
Well, the validators cost about a thousand dollars apiece. So we have like 10 of them. And if I don't have a service contract, they, you know, we pay 3, 400 dollars to repair them every time they go in. Those validators are going nonstop through collection period, nonstop. Right now I have two going out for repairs and that would be like 7, 800 dollars. So, you know, the, the contracts, you know, repairing two or three of them throughout the year pays for the contract to, because, because it's a lot cheaper to have them fixed than pay the contract than to, you know, for us to pay to have them fixed and replace them. Cause they're, and they're expensive there and they, they go nonstop. You know, they, they don't, they don't last, or, I mean, they, they last a long time, but they need to be cleaned and repaired. Like it, it's, uh, you know.
Thank you.
Further questions?
I just.
Let's see, oh, Alderman Rodriguez, you want?
I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. President. Piggybacking on what Alsop was just asking is, so if you look at the items in 2020, uh, 87, the 5,000, the two years, this past year, we budgeted at 5,000, but 2024 we didn't do anything. Same company down in the bottom in 24 was a, the actual was 1,0890 and then 2,02500 now. Plus, if you look up in the computer services, the Q D C increase in annual fees, uh, stayed 24, 25. So the only thing that we're concerned is where the, that's the contract means for last year and this year.
We consolidate, like you said, we consolidate a lot. So computer services is everything. They do, they do our billing, they do everything. They do the everything, they, from producing the bills, the folding, stuffing, postage, everything's done at their, you know, at their location. They're out on Madetuck Heights. And that, but they, so it's all part of, you know, like the 70, that, that it could be part of the producing the bills. That's, it's all part of the contract that.
It's understood. Uh, so that means that in 2024 we didn't use them. Now we had a new contract consolidating the other stuff that we had.
Well, computer services and maintenance contracts, we kind of consolidated because we had, I had too many line items.
Okay.
So just to clean it up, we, we consolidated a lot of them and brought it together.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Yeah, so, and it does show in 2024, it appears you do have it in one item as a 19,941. So that makes sense if you broke it up now, so. Uh, any further questions? Here are none. Thank you. And, uh, next up is purchasing.
Mike LeBlanc and I can cover any questions on purchasing. Um, Kevin McCaffrey, our purchasing director, um, is out of the office, so we'll take any of the questions on purchasing.
Okay, any questions for purchasing? All the women Zimmerman, do you have a question for purchasing? If not, we'll, uh, move on.
Yes, please.
Okay, hold on.
Thank you for recognizing me, sorry about that. Okay. So looking at the, um, the core function part of the book, uh, looks like we do, um, there's purchase orders issued for education in the tune of, um, 6,424 purchase orders and 160 million dollars. Is that all education P Os? How does the, how does the P O function split between education and our purchasing department?
Yes, so all requisitions that ultimately get turned into purchase orders go through the purchasing department. So this was the activity for fiscal year 24.
All right, so that.
The most recently completed fiscal year.
And that includes busing and, that includes busing as well, right? Like our.
That's all of their purchase orders.
Okay.
Correct, they, all of their purchase orders. Um, the last approver on the education side is Dorian Biolo, the chief financial officer. Then they come to me for approval and then they go to the purchasing department.
And the purchasing department consists of four people, the director, the assistant director, associate two and associate one.
Correct.
So we have four people cutting 12,718 purchase orders throughout the year. Is that correct?
That's correct. The purchasing director and the assistant purchasing director are the ones involved in the approval process of requisitions that ultimately they get turned into P Os and it is an electronic system.
Okay. Um, the purchasing director's salary between the, um, FY25 adopted budget and our request for FY26, we go from 120,000 to 135,000. Is that, um, per contract?
That is based on his contract, which I think may have been outstanding for a few years. Um, you know, when the fiscal year 25 budget was developed. So that is the amount based on his current contract.
Okay, thank you. I still have more questions, I just need one second. When we were talking, uh, and I'm, who, who is the purchasing department? Are they sick or?
So Kevin McCaffrey is the director of purchasing. And I just mentioned a couple of minutes ago that Mike and I will take the questions for purchasing because Kevin is out of the office for a couple of weeks. So he wasn't available for the meetings. If there's anything, we could certainly follow up with him on anything if needed, but, um, we'll take questions tonight and answer them as best we can.
Sure. So in the goals and objectives, when they're improving the efficiencies within the purchasing by streamlining processes, my question was, what are the processes? What are, what is on your radar for FY25 into 26? Like what are we changing?
I think the biggest thing is, uh, the benefits that are going to come with the modifications that have been made in the procurement ordinance, uh, with, uh, establishing higher limits for the three different components of uh, items that are, are not subject to bid, those that are subject to, uh, what the purchasing director would refer to as a fax bid, uh, where they send it out to over 4,000 registered vendors on our system. It's all electronic. And then, um, with the higher threshold, it'll reduce the number of, uh, formal, uh, bids that have to be issued, uh, going forward. And so from an efficiency standpoint, uh, you know, currently that, that department of four, uh, you know, produces quite a bit, um, as you saw from the volume. Um, so this will provide some, some benefits, uh, you know, greatly, uh, improving the efficiency on the process on the bidding side.
I was in procurement in my past life, so that number seemed very high. All right. I guess we, did we just, um, take on the procureware? I have, how to, how is the procureware online bidding system going? What are the pros and cons? Is that something we newly implemented?
No, it's, it's been in place for many years and, uh, it, it's a good program. It's really provided, you know, at the time, you know, for automating the whole process as it relates to, um, the issuance of, uh, these fax bids as well as, uh, the, uh, request for proposals. Um, there's an ability for, uh, interested parties to submit questions online through the system, uh, provide responses, um, to those questions through the system. And it also, uh, over time is built up a, a really good catalog of, of a database of information. All the components of, of the, the bid itself is tracked within the system from, uh, from the issuance uh, to ultimately the closing of the bid.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Taj, good evening.
Hi. So last year we had, uh, I had asked Mr. McCaffrey about if any of the bids are offered in languages other than English and if we do any tracking on who our bidders are, if we're going, if the winning bids tend to lean more toward any particular demographic or any outreach strategies to make sure that businesses owned by people of color or women are, uh, there's an intentional outreach effort. He had said at the time that he was sort of looking into ways to modify whatever software we have. Do you know if that's been done? Or have we've looked into it any further?
I do not. I do not. We could get back to you on that one.
Are all the bids still only in English or have we, are they offered in Spanish as well?
I believe they're just in English.
Okay. Um, and the reason why I brought it up last year and why I'm thinking of it again is because that was one of the recommendations from the diversity committee was to look at who receives bids and, and our outreach efforts to a variety of businesses. Um, but it doesn't seem like we, in the past year, you would say we've done, we've moved toward that at all? Any closer?
I, Mr. McCaffrey would have to speak directly on that one.
Great. That was, that's my only question for purchasing, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Alderman Rodriguez.
On page 96, uh, maintenance of office equipment. Is that something new that, uh, or are we, who did that before? Cause now we're budgeting for 750. I know it's a, a lower amount, but we didn't have it in past years. For maintenance equipment. So who did that before and who's going to do it now?
I don't know if there's, I, my guess is at the end of the day, uh, this office, you know, being the four people with their computers, their monitors, uh, keyboards, et cetera. I would anticipate that Mr. McCaffrey was looking to, uh, provide a funding vehicle for replacement of some of those components.
So this is to, not maintenance, to replace equipment?
Yep.
Okay, cause I, and, and I'm asking this question because I, I don't see it in past years. I don't know if the I T department was work, uh, did the maintenance and he's going to elaborate more coming up, but, is it budget now to, for 750, so, um, and we didn't have it last year. So I just wanted to know what is the intent for, for this budget?
Yeah, I don't know if I could comment. I'm not sure of the exact origin on that one. Again, I, my, my guess would be that even though it's under the service maintenance contract, that it's, uh, likely for the replacement of a component of the, the, uh, computer equipment.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman Alsop.
I missed, heard something, I think, but the Board of Education sends all its purchase orders through this office?
That's correct. They start as requisitions. A requisition gets entered and lost in our financial management system. Um, it goes through the education department side. So there can be multiple people who have to approve the requisition on that side. Ultimately, the final approver on the education side is Dorian Biolo, the chief financial officer in the education department. Then they come to the budget office and I review all of the requisitions for approval as well. And then they go to the purchasing department to ultimately be turned into purchase orders.
And that's a significant number, I'm assuming from the, uh, from the Board of Ed?
So correct, so, um, as Alderman, Alderman Zimmerman was, um, referencing, it's on page 148 of the actual budget book in the purchasing department's goal section. Um, they reported that they issued 6,424 purchase orders for the education department in fiscal year 24. So that's the most recently completed fiscal year.
Does the purchasing department backcharge the education department for all that work?
They do not charge them, but they do provide an in-kind services report to the education department each year. So they report to education, uh, about how much of their time was related to the education department.
Since they have their own budget, why do they not get charged for their services?
We provide, um, a number of in-kind services. Multiple departments throughout the city do provide in-kind services to the Department of Education, um, the budget office, the finance department, um, and a number of others. And again, we do report those as in-kind services, which I believe the, the education department needs for their reporting to the state. Um, but there's certain services that, that we've continued to do as, uh, perform as in-kind services and not charge them back. Um, again, we do make a contribution to the education department. It's 158.4 million dollars. If we were charging them for all of these services, I assume they'd be asking us for additional funding in the contribution.
I just, I, I'm just considering that they get pretty much autonomous on their budget with everything because we have to give them that amount of money.
That's the minimum budget requirement.
To spend any way they can. Why we don't backcharge that, you know? Since everybody else is funded from the general budget wholly.
The education department does make an 11 million dollar contribution to the health fund. That is one area, um, that basically you can view as a chargeback. Um, it doesn't fund their entire participation in the plan, but it is one area that over the last several years, we have received funding from them for, um, their participation in the health fund. Again, for partial of their participation, not, not the full amount. Um, but there, there are, like I said, a number of departments, um, that do provide in-kind services. But if we were to charge the department for those services, I don't know that they'd be able to fund them without asking us for additional funding in their contribution. Um, one other thing that I would note is that they do, um, pay for the school resource officers. There's a credit budgeted in the police department budgets. That's an, another area where they actually, um, pay the police department.
All right, I, I, again, I just think it's something that could be charged back since they have a pretty much autonomous budget of their own and we're handcuffed anyways, we have to give them the same amount, minimum. Maybe they'd be a little bit, uh, prudent on other things that they're spending money on that don't seem to be doing a whole lot of good.
Thank you.
I can editorialize that too much.
Anything further? Here are none, thank you. And next up is internal audit.
We have Joe Garvis, our internal auditors here tonight to answer questions.
How are you, sir? And questions?
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Once again, thank you for coming. Appreciate your time. My question to you is, I noticed that. an accountant one. You budgeted, but the mayor took it out. Is there any reason for that?
I don't really know, but that was a FARC request. They've been putting in for this repeatedly. And what we have done is, we've been fortunate, we picked up an intern to pick up some of the slack, and it's a no-cost intern. He's on the state's payroll, but he works for us.
I'm sorry. Can you just raise the microphone, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. We, I'm not sure why it was knocked out, but here's what I do know. We picked up a no-cost intern from the state program, and that person is picking up some of the slack. So we've got like a half-time person, basically. More part-time, maybe slightly more towards half-time when he's in between semesters.
Okay. The other question for me is, on page 101, you asked for, you requested, an audit management software platform.
Mm-hmm.
It was not given to you. Is that, can you elaborate why you needed that system and for what usage?
Sure. We've met with senior management in the mayor's office and talked about that request and what it's going to do. And basically, you know, we're at the point where we're, you know, we're a small department, you know, two people. And sometimes two and a half, sometimes one and a half, since I've been here, sometimes just one. So what we're hoping to do with software and automation is do more with less. That's the thinking. We've already got part of that package. This takes the package up a notch and gives us more capability.
How long it's been since we haven't been audited in the city?
I'm sorry?
How long it has been that we haven't, you know, that you're up to date for the audits in the city?
You mean all the departments?
Mm-hmm.
And I answered that question before, and the FARC brought it up, and we talked about it here. To the best of my knowledge, and I know James Berthelsen two auditors ago, I know Sandy Mathewna and myself, I don't think we've done that, between the three of us, to be honest with you. And that's not too hard to figure out. You just go into the pull-down menu and look at the audit reports. And what James did is not up there, but I've talked to James about it. He was two auditors ago. Before that, I have no idea what the history was.
Okay.
So that's part of our challenge, is we're hoping to cover more ground with automated features and robotics in the software.
So taking this vacancy out of the budget, could it, that help for the $7,400, $7,440?
I'm sorry, the software or the position?
Yeah, the software. Removing, removing that position, would, that would help get that 700, because we're taking away, we're taking away $43,000. The software is $7,000.
Right.
So...
I'm not saying the software's a replacement for a person, but it can do a lot of things that auditors used to do. It's really remarkable. That position might be a misfit for where we're going. We might need somebody with more of a technical background.
Okay.
As opposed to an accountant one, maybe somebody with a pure, somebody who's really in the tech side of things.
Okay. Sarah, would, that would have helped the $7,000, the, that's removing the $43,000 salary?
So the accountant one position that wasn't funded was a request for Fiscal Year '26. It's not currently funded in the Fiscal Year '25 adopted budget. The Department has two budgeted positions right now, has had two budgeted positions for a number of years now. We did not fund the request for the new position in the Internal Audit Department. Again, there were other departments as well that requested new positions going into Fiscal Year '26, and unfortunately, we just weren't able to fund all of the requests. And again, for new positions, new expenses, as we talked about a little bit earlier. The Senior Internal Auditor position was filled, I believe, a little over a year ago. I think we had a similar conversation at this time last year. And at this time last year, I think the position was just very recently filled. And as the Budget Development Committee looks at these requests, we kind of wanted to give it time to see how did the office function with the two full-time positions that it has had budgeted for a number of years. But as Joe mentioned, there's been times where they've only had one person. So we wanted to give some time to see how would it work when we actually have those two positions filled, and is an additional position actually needed. The software request, I would mention that we continue to fund the existing software program that Joe has in the Internal Audit Department that was added, I believe, a couple years ago. So we continue to fund that program. We did not include the Audit Management Software Platform that's listed at a request of $7,440. Again, it's similar to the discussion we had earlier with the Assessor's Office with the new programs, and really, we're trying to focus on funding what we currently have and maintaining, you know, current services, current, you know, service maintenance contracts and the like. So, but as Joe mentioned, we have had a conversation with him about that software platform. We'll continue to evaluate it. I believe he's going out to RFP for the program. Again, it's not funded in the mayor's proposed budget. We will, you know, can, again, continue to evaluate it. If it's found that it is necessary, we can try to find a funding source for it in the future. But we're just, again, continuing to evaluate that. I believe the requests from FARC with some additional information about the program just came in towards the end of March. So there really wasn't much information given about the new program when the budget request was submitted in January. But there was some more information provided. Unfortunately, the proposed budget was finalized at that point. So again, we'll continue to evaluate it as we move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me. I'm going to die on this hill. I really feel that the Audit Department is a very important department where we need to invest in. So I, I think my question is going to go to you, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, to help me understand or help us understand, like, the thought process behind having two people in our Audit Department. And I think as a new administration, you'd kind of want to come in and audit everything and find out where we, where we sit. But there might be processes that I don't know.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
To help me formulate my answer to your question. Why, besides saying it, do you think it's important that we add staff at this point or the rest of it? Why is it your position or understanding that we're not fully able to accomplish what we can with the two people that we have?
Sure. We haven't audited the city in over a decade, per the conversation.
We haven't audited the city in over a decade?
Isn't that what we talked about last year? And we just said this year, we haven't?
Well, if we are not auditing the city, then I wonder about the value of the two people that we have. We haven't audited every department in the city annually, and I don't think there's any place that does that. There's a cycle over which they get done, and they continue to do that. We've had issues getting a second person into that office. Frankly, we've had issues keeping a second person in that office once they've been hired. And I think what Sarah is saying is we'd like to see how it runs with two people in that office actually working for some length of time. So it is not apparent to me that there's large-scale issues that are going unanswered as a result of any of this. And I'd be very happy to hear about those.
No, that's good. I'm asking you.
Right. That's what I'm, so, you know, the idea is there, but I don't know that we are incapable of doing what we expected the FARC Board to do. Also, the city is audited on an annual basis through all of its funds by both outside auditors and to the extent we're getting state and federal grants, there's a state and federal audit that has to be done as well. So they're a little bit different in the context and the scope of those audits, but there is ongoing audits that get done over all of that. So...
And that was going to be my next question. So we have processes put in place annually.
There are audits that are done as a normal course of looking at the finances. But, you know, obviously, the internal auditor has more powers. Part of that is to investigate when there's allegations of wrongdoing and other things, which frankly, there just haven't been a lot of that have come through. So I think that we're getting, you know, we want to see how this plays out with what's there. But they are doing regular rotating audits through the city, at least I believe they are. And as far as the software goes, you know, we put a new software program in place. We've had conversations with IT. It's not clear at this moment that they're fully utilizing the software that was put in place last year. And we're going to build on that, which may make sense at some point, but we need to take a look at it. And additionally, even looking at what this software would do that the other piece isn't doing, was mostly as a tickler file. So that when, when they have audited and have findings, if you're familiar with these audits, there'll be findings in most audits, you know, got to tighten up this process or whatever, there's got to be a sense that you should respond within a certain period of time. I'm not sure we've always put a response time on, but to the extent that we have, someone has to follow up on that. And I'm not sure, at this moment, a whole system is necessary for someone to say, in six months, I have to call and ask the Department of Education, what have they done about these three findings or six findings? So those are the things we're looking at. We're not, not taking it seriously, but I think there's a lot of questions that are out there, from our perspective, that just needs to be taken a look at. And I will tell you that I was part of the commission that put together the FARC Board and changed it from a finance board. So, you know, there's a certain understanding of what's been going out there. And I just don't think that the issues that were of concern back then are, you know, here today at the same level that they are. Things have been running, and I'm not aware of a lot of issues that have been even found out of the audits that have been done at this point. So I don't think we're missing anything, really.
I appreciate you clarifying that perception. Thank you.
Further questions?
Uh, I don't know if I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I might have a few others. I am a little concerned with two people in our Audit Department, but I give that argument to you, Sarah, about your department, too, so...
Just make note, Mayor. She wants a few more employees and some more city vehicles.
That's right.
Keep that in mind.
Keep racking it up. Oh, the fraud hotline. My question was, who mans that and what does that look like? Do we get, okay. Do we get, is that an active line?
Yes, it is. I get a variety of sources. Some come hard copy, some come email, some come voicemail on the hotline. And you're hitting on something that I've been asking for for five years. The city, as far as I know, and somebody could direct me to it if you have it, city has no fraud policy that I'm aware of. When I first came here, excuse me? Oh, okay. When I first came here from the capital city, I was in Hartford, team of five over there. We got hit with a number of frauds, and they're always in the paper. Everybody knows what goes on in Hartford. And they didn't have fraud policy either. So the gentleman that was the director at the time, he drafted it. And I've given that to Linda Webby, I've given it to Angela, I believe, I've given it to Emily Cadman, who's no longer here. And we've had discussions about it, but as far as I know, it never went anywhere. See, and that puts me in a tight position because, yes, we do get complaints, and some of them are quite serious. And we don't have a documented written policy that I'm aware of. And if you look at Hartford, and I'd be happy to give it to the board here, it's very clear. When a fraud happens, here's the, here's the, here's what happens. Legal does this, risk does this, audit does this, the FARC does this, da-da-da-da-da, HR does this. They have clearly defined roles and responsibilities. And then they have a process to process the complaint. I get something, and then I either go upstairs to Dan Foster, or it used to be Emily, and now there's some discussion of maybe Terrace Shaw is going to be involved because there's HR matters. True, but there are also financial matters. That's where I come in, as the independent auditor. So, again, I'm repeating myself, but in the capital city, we didn't have a fraud policy. We got hit with some high-profile frauds, made it into the paper, news and all that stuff. Then we developed one. And when I came here, like I said, it was obviously missing, and they gave me the follow-up on the library. Everybody knows the story on that. And I went to Linda and said, you know, what do you have? She pointed me to something that basically was just like one paragraph. And ever since, I've been, you know, asking about it and still don't have it. So it kind of puts me in a tight spot, because I got to go to the FARC. And, you know, with all due respect, they don't really want to know the details, because they don't want to be that close to the fact pattern, and I understand that. And also, I think they have limited capability when it comes to matters of fraud. I'm a former revenue agent, and I've done, been doing this forever. I used to skim test everything I touched. And also, in the city, I did a lot of forensic audits for them. And they ended very badly for some people. So I'm intimately familiar with the whole fraud thing. And so, I'm rambling here, sorry. But yeah, we do get complaints, and I do have a number of complaints now. And I'm not sure how to proceed, because it's not clear how to proceed.
Okay. I'm going to put that on the list of challenges that I ask for the departments where we can follow up later.
I'm just appalled to find out that we have a list of frauds that no one knows what to do with in the city of Waterbury. So I'd like to take a look at that. We'll have a meeting tomorrow with the Corporation Council and the State's Attorney's Office and the Police Chief to talk about all of these frauds that are somehow just hanging in the air that no one knows what to do with. So... Complaints come into the line, and you're saying that you have no idea what to do with them, and that you have these rather serious allegations of fraud that you don't know what to do with. Is that what you just related to this Board of Aldermen?
Yeah.
Hold on one second. Joe, just wait for the mic.
Sure.
Okay.
We have one that's been floating around for like two years, and everybody seems to know what the fact pattern is on that. Then we have two whistleblower complaints, and they're former city employees who have left. And I, they've come into my office and talked to me. But the problem I have is, what do I do with it? We don't have a process to do something with it. I've been asking for that process for five years. And I know you're new to this, but, you know, Emily had it for a while, and Emily left. And Linda, and then she left. And now we have Angela. Okay, fine, so let's get some policy.
So I'm going to take that as one of the challenges that I ask. Can you give me another top challenge in your department, please?
Doing more with less. That's where the, doing more with less, that's where the automated software comes in. And what I'm going to do with the robotic piece, and that's new to me, is, you know, we talked about the difference between the one platform and the other. The, when I put the RFP out there, I'm going to ask for unlimited everything. And I think we can get it for a good price. As opposed to I have one robot now, and that's cool, it can go here, it can go there. But if you get a team of them, then you can go in six different places at once. It can be somewhere where I'm not. That's the point.
Thank you for your time.
Further questions? Alderman Alsa.
I'm not going to have much of a question, but I do want to make a statement that for 1% or thereabouts of the budget, we can put a better system in place, I think, if we had somebody else in that office to assist. Even an accountant one, the lowest position we have for accountants, for 1%, I mean, we talked before, and it was like, oh, this is nothing. It's only 1%, it's only 5%. It's 1% for peace of mind that we're getting a better look. And my biggest hope is that it comes out that everything's wonderful, and we can say it, because we have an independent audit, which is the most important part, versus looking at yourselves. I make mistakes, everybody makes mistakes. It's not meaning that you're doing something wrong, but a different set of eyes, and that's what an audit is supposed to do. And I think giving them an additional hand in that office is not much to ask for, for $44,000 a year.
Just to comment, I don't think, from the perspective of the Budget Development Committee, I don't think we've been given enough of a justification for why the accountant one is needed, what that person would be doing for this department, and how it would actually help them to perform more audits. We have two full-time, higher-level positions in that department currently. We haven't always had the two positions filled. As I mentioned earlier, it's been just over a year now, I believe, that we've actually had the two positions filled. And we'd like to see how the department operates with those two management-level positions filled. And there's a number of departments from year to year that put in the same type of request. It could be, whether it's a $43,000 position, a $50,000 position, and we aren't able to fund it in other areas as well. fund it in other areas as well. So we'd like to be able to fund everything that the departments ask for because I do think that they're asking for what they feel they do need to run their departments, and they're not asking for much extra. But we were trying, again, to control expenses, to limit the tax growth. So we didn't feel that we had enough of a justification to fund the additional position this year.
Okay. And I'm going to say this with all respect, not everybody has your magic wand that can do this alone. And I really, you know, I believe you need help to help you do your job, not better, but easier. And I don't feel it would be a bad thing for $44,000 to give somebody else into that office who can do the simpler tasks than an accountant one would do.
Thank you. Again, there are two... There are two actual employees in the internal audit department currently. And that has been the structure of the office for a number of years. They haven't always both been filled. They are currently both filled, and we're hoping that that alone goes a long way to help the office to complete their work.
I hope we don't have the same conversation next year, but we will, hopefully.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Oh, further questions? Joe, I have... Since the second person has been there, has it... Has the process been better for you? Have you been able to audit more or at a faster pace?
It's kind of flat. I've had some interns that were rock stars. I'm sorry. It's kind of been... A kind of flat, I would say. I was fortunate that I had a couple interns in my office that were rock stars. And it's been kind of... We're going like this, kind of sideways. You know, as far as the third position goes, I'd settle even for another intern. Because if you get the right one, you can get a lot out of them.
Okay.
My last intern left me, and she's at Ernst &amp; Young in New Jersey. She's in the Big Four. So I jokingly tell people I develop Big Four talent. And that's not the first time I've done that.
Very good. How many years you been at, Joe?
Where?
How many years is our auditor? Have you been here?
Five.
Five. In the five years as you have audited, have you seen, besides the library, anything in our departments that's alarming, anything that screams something fishy, something suspicious?
Well, we just had the problem in legal, right? That was a problem.
Say it again.
There was the problem in legal, you know, that I was... It came at the end of that.
Okay.
That was an issue. You know, speaking of which, when we talk about audible areas in scope, we've got to take into account, you know, cloud-based systems. Aside from Lawson. Lawson's over here, and that's all well and good. But you've got cloud-based systems all over the city. Every department I go to has a piece of software, and it's not Lawson. It's something else. So that's part of the scope and scale that you got to consider.
So you're... What you're stating to us is if you do get that new software, that would accomplish that goal that you're looking for right now?
It would be helpful, yeah. Yeah. You can do more with less.
Okay.
You know, it's a question partly of, I don't even know if it's a position title, it's a skill set that you're looking for. Things are changing rapidly, and there's less old-school auditing, you know, sitting down with a piece of paper and a ruler and a pencil. That stuff's all gone. I do a lot with analytics now before I jump into things. And then I get into the kick-the-box second, you know?
And I think in all fairness, right, with... If we were to get that new software, are you capable of doing that? Or are you, like you said, would you need a new mind in there, a tech-savvy mind to come in there and act?
It would be helpful. See, because when I learned on the software packages, there was no robotics, there was no AI. This stuff is coming now, and it's cheap. That's what makes it so attractive. When I learned, it was just data analytics, and that's what I know. When you get to the robotic features, it gets a little more challenging. And then you have to understand all the city's systems, where the databases are, where the tables are, and what feeds what. On the front end, you know, we have an input screen. Where does that go on the back end into what table? And that's where you're going to deploy your software to look at transactional things.
Sorry about that. I thought you were finished. So basically, if we were to bring that new software, and you'd be forced to probably get a new employee with a different title, with a different scale of... Level of quality and pay scale and all that to actually run the system, correct?
It would... Not to run it so much, is to put all the pieces together. Work with the help desk from the vendor, work with Dan Arapino, work with whoever to make it happen faster than I could do it. Remember, I'm an accountant who knows some things, but I'm not a tech person per se.
Okay. I'm just trying to, you know, weigh out if we were to get the software, and then we don't have the right person to finish it off, the software's actually not doing what it's supposed to be doing.
Right. You want to kind of look at, how do we get a person who is tech-savvy and is... Fits into some role in... You know, I've looked at the city's job description, so I have some ideas. But an accountant one might not be the right person unless they're a dual major, maybe accounting and technology or something like that.
That's... Okay, and that's what I was trying to get to the bottom line, is I think that, you know, one without the other is probably...
Right, exactly. Because now you have an accountant mindset versus somebody who's tech-savvy.
Okay.
And you can have a dual major in college. I know people that did it, half-tech, half-financer-accounting, yeah.
And are you actively always looking for interns?
Not lately, but it's not a bad idea.
Yeah, I think maybe put it out there to the colleges and stuff, I would assume.
Especially if we could get one for free again.
Well, I think you would be able to.
And get a tech major, that's what you want.
Yeah, and you get a real savvy one, too, so.
It's a possibility. It's a possibility.
Any further questions? Here and none? All right, thank you. All right, next up is Budget. Oh. Thank you. And Sarah, you doing Budget?
Yep.
You're okay. Good. Alderman Rodriguez.
How you doing, Sarah?
Good, how are you?
Long day. My question to you is, I just want to understand... I just want to understand this situation. We created a new Department Accounting Manager. Am I right?
Correct. There's a request for a Departmental Accounting Manager position in the Budget Office. It's not currently filled. It wasn't budgeted in the current year, but it is included for the fiscal year '26 budget.
My question to it, and I just want to wrap my head into it, is how this position is $3,000 less than a Budget Director, and what he does that the Budget Director... Because we see the Budget Director is $115,000. I know we're saving that amount, but...
Correct. The Budget Director position is shown as included in the budget. The salary... There is a credit for the salary down below, the savings through vacancy and turnover. So although it's showing as three positions in the office, there's actually only funding for two positions. So it would be the Manager of Budget Development and Oversight position, which is my position, and the Request for a Departmental Accounting Manager would allow us to bring another person into the department. I think we had extensive conversation last year about that. So we are looking to fund another position in the office. The Budget Director salary at $115,000, that has been a number that's been carried for quite some time and is actually probably pretty low if someone were to actually be hired into that position. But we've kept it at that amount, but it is kind of backed out on the bottom there, as you see. So the funding is only available for two positions in the office.
Okay. So the Budget Director, what qualifications are different between the Department Accounting Manager and the Budget Director? As the only difference is only $3,000.
Well, again, the salary of $112,000 for the Departmental Accounting Manager is what is put in the budget. It would be... It is a management union position, so there is a salary range. Salary can be negotiated. With nobody in the position currently, I'm not sure exactly where we would end up. But I think that 115 is actually low for the Budget Director position. If there were actually somebody in it, the salary would be higher. But it's... We've carried that amount in the budget for a number of years now. But again, a lot of times, putting in savings through vacancy and turnover because it was vacant. So the actual funding for the full position wasn't in the budget.
Do we have a plan to hire a Budget Director? And if not, if it's possible to take it out from the budget, from what we have currently?
Yeah. So here's the thing, right? Budget Director is a charter position. And it's got built-in requirements for them. The first person to hold that position was a woman named Ophelia Matos, who came with the Oversight Board, then transitioned into a city position. When Ophelia left, her strong recommendation, and one that I think has proven very prescient over the years, was to put Sarah in that job, who had been acting as her deputy. There is a degree qualification for that that Sarah does not have. That was why it's in there, I don't know. I will tell you, I was part of, again, that charter, that we did all of this back in 2002 or 2003. And it's just, it's not there. But Sarah was doing a bang-up job with it, and so she stayed. So at the time, I think there was a point where O'Leary just said, we're going to create this position, and that's what he did, the Management of Budget Development and Oversight, which is what Sarah holds. She's performing all of the functions of the Budget Director. There is, although it shows a 115 because the charter says the position exists, it all gets netted out right below that. So there's $0 carried for that position in here. The reason that's at 115 is no one's touched it because it hasn't been filled in all those years. At some point, who knows? We may go back and fill it if Sarah ever doesn't stay in the position. But right now, she's doing that work just with a different title, and she's doing, I think, the most extraordinary job that can be done. And I don't think we could find anyone who would do a better job for her. So that's the history of it. And that's why the Departmental Accounting Manager is only 3,000 less than... Because that number at the top has never kept up with what the market would bear. That number would be, I'm presuming, 180, 190, 200, if you were to fill it, somewhere in that range, if you were to actually try to fill that realistically. But there's no intention of doing that. I have no intention of doing it until such time as we need somebody there, if that's the right fit. But if Sarah's willing to stay, that's the way to go because I think we would all agree that Sarah does an extraordinary job with this year over year over year.
Yeah, no, and you answered the question that I wanted to know is if now I know that we cannot take that position away from the books, let's just say that.
At some point, maybe, as a Charter Revision Commission gets done, it might make sense to look at that, but it just has sort of hung there. So that's the reality of it.
Or even the requirements of the budget.
Right, could get changed. Yeah. I mean, but at this point, the other... Yeah, one way or the other. But right now, it just sits there, but the work is being done. It's being done really well, so.
And that same topic, is there a way to do an amendment to the charter and come back to it?
It would require an entire Charter Revision Commission, and then they would have to take it up. They would have to go to the voters. It would have to be approved by the voters. So it's a process.
No problems. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Further questions? All the women's members.
Do we know why we didn't go through this with the Charter Revision Commission that just happened? No.
You know, commissions, there were things that they wished to focus on. I think that frankly, I'm just not sure that this is on anyone's radar, to be honest with you, because of the way it's been working, and it's... There's not an issue that arises from it other than sort of a technicality.
Sure.
So I think it just wasn't on anyone's radar. And given the issues they wanted to accomplish, I think they didn't think it was worth taking this one on as well, so.
Okay. Last year, we went back and forth, Mr. President, we went back and forth that you were kind of like the only one in the department, and everyone kind of chimed in that you have enough support for what you're doing. I'd love to have you have more support, but... So what is this new role... What is this new role going to do that you're not... That's not being filled right now?
Sure. So I think, as we talked earlier, I think Mike was talking about positions in his office in succession planning. I think it is important. This is the Budget Office for the entire city. It's important to have just even a backup. As I mentioned earlier, I approve every requisition that comes through before it goes to the Purchasing Office. I just... To have a backup there is helpful through the Budget Development Process. When all of the department budget requests are coming in, this position would be involved in helping with that process as well. Preparing our monthly reports, dealing with all the different departments, focusing on capital projects, and checking in with departments, and making sure that they're reviewing open purchase orders and processing their invoices, and just extra help from the Budget Office to the departments. Because some of our larger departments do have accounting staff within them, limited, maybe one position. I think they could always use some extra assistance in those areas. So I think that this position in the Budget Office would be very helpful in that respect as well. And again, just monitoring, additional assistance to monitor budgets on a daily basis, to be looking at where all different departments are, you know, throughout the year, working with the departments, being able to... I think the extra position will allow us to check in with departments more frequently throughout the year. You know, sometimes my day could be filled with quite a number of meetings, so having someone in the office that's available for assistance to departments, and again, approving requisitions and things like that. I think this position will be very helpful with that.
And I completely agree with you, but who's doing that now, then? Because we talked about the Finance Department being such a big support for your department, like...
Right. So over the years, I think we... I have had support from the Finance Department. I think at this point, it's become more apparent that we probably do need another person within the Budget Office to be able to focus more on budget. I mean, and I do have maybe a backup setup for approval of requisitions. I worked with Mike a while back on that, just to have someone in the case I'm not there. I'm not sure that we've really even utilized that much, you know, on days off or vacation. I mean, a lot of times, I'm still the one that's approving requisitions, you know, off-site. So I think it'll be very helpful in that respect. Again, we've been able to share some staff, even, you know, more so on the maybe admin support level, I think, can help, too, where we can share staff. But I think it would be helpful to have someone housed within the Budget Office that can get, you know, more deeper into the budgets of all the departments and not just having the setup where it's just some support when I might need it on a, you know, not very frequent basis.
Sure. Is there any other... Is there any intern not... In addition to this role, is there any internship possibilities that are open in your department that we've looked into, or is that not...
I haven't had an intern in the past, no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman, Alsa.
Would that position be a civil service position?
Yes. It's a management union position, hired through civil service.
Okay. Why would you not look at an accountant two or three in that position? Why does it have to be a management?
An accountant three is also in the management union, and accountant two is in the white-collar union. I think it's important to have someone that could perform higher-level work. Again, in some situations, I would really like to be able to rely on the person as my backup person that could perform that higher-level work, even perhaps from time to time, attending a meeting in my absence. So I think I'm looking for the qualifications that rise to the level of the position being in the management union.
Because, you know, there's like a $20,000 or so difference, a significant difference anyways, between the three and the position you're soft... What is it? 12... $24,000 difference between an accountant three and the position you're trying to fill here. I'm just trying to justify why we have to go so high when, again, your magic wand has difference, between an accountant three and the position you're trying to fill here. I'm just trying to justify why we have to go so high when, again, your magic wand has been doing so wonderful, why do we have to jump so far?
And again, that's the, the number we have budgeted. It can be negotiated with a selected candidate. It perhaps may not, may not be that amount, but that's the amount that, that we put in the budget, probably erring on the side of caution of having enough to, to fund a potential candidate. An accountant three position also, within the management union, a qualified and, you know, selected candidate would also have the ability to negotiate a salary with the city. So I know you mentioned any accountant three. We have accountant threes in a number of departments, and the salaries can vary based on the number of years they've been here, their experience when they came in, when they were hired, and they negotiated a certain salary. So if, if it weren't accountant three, I'm not sure exactly where we would land on a salary position.
I looked up one, just for a reference point.
Correct, right.
Eighty-eight thousand, so I was like, okay.
Yep.
You know, same thing with the two, it was 57,000, which I can understand, maybe going to a three instead, but, of a two, I'm saying.
Understood.
Okay. I had one other question. Your office supplies are going up a lot, in that, not from last year. Well, yeah, they're going up $1,000 from last year, but they're up from 724 and 24 to 3,000 this year.
Correct. I believe the budget, I believe, has been $2,000 for all of those, the years that you see actuals. It may have been 1,500 at one point. I think we have seen the cost of office supplies go up over the years. It, it was 2,000 in the current year. I did request 3,000 for next year, and again, with the possible addition of another employee, wanted to budget an increase in that account to accommodate anything that might be needed for that position as well.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
I told Mr. Arapino to get a Kevlar vest because I had questions too, so, sorry.
It's okay.
I gave up, I gave up a quick question, sorry. I'm all set, thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you. IT is next.
Yes, IT is next.
And Danny Arapino is here to answer any questions.
All right, we'll get right into questions. Questions for Dan. Alderman, Tajal Dean.
Thank you. So, looking over your, your items, and I know we talked a little bit about this last year, so I'm eager to ask you again about the increases and the protections we have for cybersecurity. What could you?
So if we look at my 543031 account, that's the, the big account that covers all the software maintenance, hardware maintenance, licenses, that sort of thing.
Yep.
The request this year is over $1 million. It's $1,039. Of that, $450,840 is cybersecurity.
Is what?
Cybersecurity. So we are spending 43% of everything we spend on software and hardware, just to secure our systems from hackers and malware and all that sort of thing. Kind of outrageous that we have to do this, but we have to do it. One of the reasons why we've had to increase some of the spending is we've had cyber insurance underwriters come in, and they've assessed some of our systems. They do things like penetration testing. They inform us where they found holes and things like that that we have to fill. And the only way to fill those holes is to secure whatever countermeasures there are in the industry, and that's how we get our cyber insurance. We also have CISA, the Department of Homeland Security. They work, we work with the FBI. They come in, they assess our systems. We're doing a lot of things all the time to tighten up our cybersecurity, just because we have to. Unfortunately, we have to. So.
Excellent. And, and would you say that the IT department has experienced a sort of an uptick in, I'm sure everyone, everywhere, and city municipalities are obviously ripe for it.
So here's where I get nervous about speaking publicly about how secure our network is, because that ends up being a challenge to hackers everywhere. We have never had an incident. We had one, little one, years ago, it was nothing. We have never had the kind of incidents that you read about in Hartford and New Haven. Plymouth was a recent one, Torrington. We are very cognizant of our responsibility to make sure our systems are secure. And the problem with systems, it's not like, if the park department has a problem with a park, it's usually isolated to one little park, and it's trees, and it's a tennis court, whatever, they take care of it. Problem with cybersecurity is, we can get a hit that takes on our entire network. And we have to make sure that we have the ability, two things, prevent it from happening, and we have perimeter defenses, and we have email defenses, we have all kinds of things, and make sure that we're recoverable, so we don't ever have a case where we have to pay some Bulgarian hacker $5 million to give us our files back. We don't have that. We have everything redundantly backed up, online, offline. We have the ability, I believe, to recover from just about anything that you've seen in the news. How do we do that? Well, we're very strict about email. We're very strict about internet access. We're very strict about people coming in from the outside. I think you already know that you have to use multi-factor authentication if you want to come into our network.
It's the bane of my existence, yeah.
So you have to, you have to sign in. It challenges you twice. We do it now. Once to get into the authenticator that's on somebody's phone, and then a second time to get into the network.
Right.
Privileged accounts, like I have a privileged account, very few of us, we have to go in through several layers in order to get in. And it's cumbersome, and it's a, it's a pain. But you know what? It's necessary.
Right.
So we do it.
Excellent, great. Yeah, I appreciate the, the update, because I did notice many of these softwares and programs are increasing. I think that's probably to be expected when it comes to cybersecurity.
Well, you know, and this goes to Alderman Also's question, and the reason why I have to have a Kevlar jacket is because software goes up, and it's been going up tremendously. And there's not much we can do about it. I mean, these are the industry prices.
Right.
When Microsoft sends us a notice saying that, as of such and such a date, that thing that we used to give you for free, we're now going to charge you for, there's really not much we can do, except buy it.
Yeah, absolutely. That's really my only question on the IT department, just noticing the, the changes. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Hi, hey, Alderman. I, I heard this before. I work with it a lot. A lot of towns are going with the budget, like, the building department. They have, some towns now, they do it online. Waterbury is the only town so far that I noticed that it's still paper.
Talk about building permits?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a product called CityView, and within that, there's an online building permit component. And we've been given money, capital money, to deploy another module within CityView that's going to allow us to do that. That's on our, our list. We're getting to it. We've got a little sidetracked within CityView because we now have a lot more inspections that are taking place. We're putting inspections online.
Thank you.
Where the inspectors go out with a tad, a pad-type device, a tablet, and they're able to do their inspections online, and record the information, and take pictures, and do all that kind of stuff. That's important. The online permitting system, there's been a personnel change in that department, and we think that maybe someone new coming in is going to be more amenable to the technology, and we think we have an opportunity there to make things really better.
So the difference is the systems that they use in all the towns to compare to what we use?
You know, I hear a lot of stories about how great things are in other towns. And no offense, but then I go find out, and it turns out that you heard it from their aldermen or heard it from somebody, and when you really get down into the weeds, it's not really as, as nice.
No, they're not. I work with them almost every day. So they're not. They're not easy to work with. But I see that, you know, going to the new technology system...
The ability to request a permit online is something that we have not had, but we are going to have it shortly. The other problem with requesting permits online is nobody ever comes in and says, "Okay, I need a permit for this, and here's my drawings," and you're done. You go in, you sit with an inspector, an engineer, whatever, you go over the drawings, he tells you what you're missing, he tells you what it's going to cost.
Yeah.
You negotiate, and then you come up with a, with a payment amount, and then you, at the end of the day, then you go to the front counter, you pay for your building permit, and it gets issued to you. Very difficult to have those exchanges online when there's nobody there.
Yeah. No, and you're true about that.
I envision one thing that we've found, you know, we tried a few testings. So if somebody puts their permit request online, next thing you get is an email saying, "You got to come into the office to talk about it, because we need a lot more information." We haven't really accomplished anything.
Yeah, each time is different. But now, I see that you're going to be losing a, someone in your department. It was a $49,000 salary from one of the, how that affects the...
So the library, at the library, we have one person assigned there who's, who's positioned at the library. This is also the person that we use for other things, like he's the CityView mentioned permits. He's the CityView guru. The library director wanted a, a entry-level technician type to be stationed at the library. Yeah, it would be a great thing, but, you know, can't have everything. So that's been put out. Now, one of the things that, that's coincidental, that's convenient for us, is that we have an upcoming move from the Chase Building to elsewhere. And I think, and I hope I'm not speaking too, too much right now, but I think I've successfully negotiated with the library director to find a place in the basement of the library where I can put my technicians.
Okay.
That's going to give her four people, instead of the one that she wanted. So we're going to kind of, we're pushing off that requirement for a year or two, until we move back to the Chase Building, and then we can talk about it again.
Yeah, because I was, one of the questions is, I know the library was requesting an IT person full-time.
And you know what? It's justified. She did a good job putting all the information together. We found it. But what does that mean? We get an IT technician in the library instead of a fireman? You know, that's for you people to decide. At this point, I think we're in a good place, not getting, not...
Not having that person.
I think we're going to be able to elevate our service level with the, with the library in the absence of that person.
You have one IT specialist vacant position right now. It's...
We actually upgraded an IT specialist job to an application administrator during this past year.
Okay.
And that IT specialist that he was in is, is just going to go away, because we now have a new application administrator that he was promoted to.
So there'll be two positions going away?
Well, no.
Because I see that it's one, that it's IT specialist vacant.
I could help with this. So the IT department has 14 positions budgeted in the current year. They currently have 14 filled. They requested 15, so it was the additional IT specialist that would have been assigned to the library, which that was not funded. So they continue to have 14 budgeted positions, and they are fully staffed at this point.
Fully staffed?
Yep.
No, I, I just saw a vacant position there, so that was...
At the IT specialist line, you'll see three in the current adopted budget. There's two currently filled, three were requested, but only two are budgeted for next year.
Thank you for that.
So they don't have any vacancies right now.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further questions? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you. Thanks for waiting so long tonight. We appreciate you. The library obviously, like, made a case on why they need an IT person. So based on the needs that they gave you, how are we going to cover the library?
So, so I'm going to have four technicians over there as part of this move, when we vacate the Chase Building.
Mm-hmm.
They're going to be right there. So she's going to have much more support than she would have gotten with the one single position.
Is she though? Because I see your list here of goals and objectives of the year, and you have a lot of work going on, so...
So I sat down, and I said, "Rachel, Rachel, I know you asked for one position. It's, I don't know if we're going to get it. Can I put four technicians in your library?"
Yeah.
And the eyes went, "Sure."
And I think that was, everyone else covered my question, so thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions?
One more.
Alderman Rodriguez.
I see that, you know, it was requested in 20, it wasn't requested in 2025, but it's requested now for the secure awareness training, IT personnel privilege, $16,875. Is that something new?
So, well, so here's the thing. We actually asked for it two years ago, and we got it. It was given to us. But last year, we had it, the budget, and we decided that we just couldn't afford it, and that was it. But now it's catching up to us.
Could you hold that mic closer? I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I mentioned privileged accounts. Myself, my network manager, some of my, my other guys are, again, getting back to the cyber insurance underwriters and the auditors. We've been informed that we really need to have these people certified for a certain level of security before we can let them have the kind of access that they have. And so it's kind of related to that. It ends up becoming another cybersecurity expenditure.
So it's been important every single year. I know last year, they took it out.
I think what's going to happen is, we're going to get these people certified, and the certifications are going to last for, say, three years.
Okay.
Hopefully. And we won't have to do it again next year.
Perfect. That, that's what I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Thank you. Thanks for staying around. Next up is general financial operating charges.
Yep. The next two, the operating charges and the retirement board, those budgets are submitted by the Finance Department, so Mike can answer questions, and I could help as well if there's anything for me.
Sure. We'll start it off with the general financial. Any questions?
Where are we at?
Any questions, or do you want to move on to retirement?
Hold on.
Thank you. We do have questions. I'm just trying to...
Alderman Zimmerman.
Oh, thank you.
Are you ready, or I'll go with Rodriguez if you want?
Oh.
You ready?
Alderman Rodriguez. No, I'd rather pass it. Thanks.
Oh, you...
I found it.
All right, Alderman Rodriguez, okay.
I noticed that, and this is more for clarification, if you look at page 354, where it says, "The health insurance actives and the health insurance retirees," they requested it kind of backwards. Could you elaborate a little bit what, what happened there?
Sure. So the Finance Department had requested the total amount of $65 million as a contribution to the health fund, between those two lines, actives and retirees. I work on the allocation of benefits, which is required to be done within the budget. So once those calculations were done, it's just adjusting the number on what we contribute to the actives, and then what we contribute to the retirees. So in the adopted, in the proposed budget, it's 25.9 for the actives and 39.1 almost for the retirees. So it's overall the same amount between the two. So when we talk about our contribution to the health fund, and this general financial portion of the budget being $65 million, it's between those two accounts.
Okay. The, right here on the, all the way at the bottom, it says, "The land bank." How's that going? I know you guys taken out, they're asking for 300, they asked for $400,000, and you guys budgeted for 300. How's that different, differential?
So I would just comment that the current year contribution is $300,000. They did request $400,000 for fiscal year '26, but we did keep it at the same amount as the current year, $300,000. So it was a $100,000 cut from the request. I don't know if Mike would like to comment on the land bank at all and their actual activities?
Yes. So part of that request was to add an additional position, and as Sarah has commented on throughout the evening, this really wasn't the year to be able to fund new requests. As far as the activity of the land bank, it's a rolling program where the city continues to, via summary foreclosure or other mechanisms, we're, we're putting in play, particularly on a large-scale vacant lots where there's delinquencies. And when the land bank identifies these vacant parcels of interest, again, we go through a summary foreclosure process and then convey those properties to the land bank. They run a side lot program, and they're also building up pools of vacant land that eventually could be marketed for development purposes, or redevelopment purposes at the end of the day.
I had this question that, and probably, I don't know if this is for this area. Do we have a list of the communities that are, we give money to in the city, the nonprofits and people that we give money to? A list of those people that we offer those money for nonprofits and all that?
I would just mention that on pages 366 through 369, I believe, there's backup for the accounts that you see on page 354. So it shows some of the organizations that have contributions budgeted within those accounts.
And we have all of them in this two pages, 66, 67?
So, so yes, the backup for those accounts starts on page 366, and I believe goes to page 369.
Okay. I will look into that. Are we doing some savings on the workers' contributions? Because I see that you guys were, we started at $7 million, and we're going down, and you now propose that it was, it will be $5.5 million.
Yes, we are seeing successes with the, the program controls that are in place and have been in place. It's through our risk management department, our risk manager, there's a day in and day, day in and day out focus on injuries that are reported and follow-ups with the department. focus on injuries that are reported and follow-ups with the departments, particularly when there's opportunities to improve workplace safety to minimize future occurrences.
Okay. And page 355, the reserve and equipment fund, you guys are going to do a change of almost a million dollars. There's a reason for that?
So, the request for the contribution to our capital improvement fund was one point five million dollars, we're budgeting five hundred thousand, so we did cut a million dollars from that contribution. The fund is in a pretty good place currently, and we felt that we could accommodate the cut to that fund. We do each year try to put funding into the capital improvement fund through year-end surplus transfers, those, we've typically done transfers that go to our unallocated capital account, so that's helped to build the balance in the account, and that account is used to fund capital projects from year to year. This is varied, years ago, sometimes we weren't able to even budget the contribution within the general fund, but because of where the fund is, the sale of property, when we have proceeds from that, that, those proceeds go into our unallocated capital account, so we have built up a balance to fund our projects, and we felt that we could accommodate this decrease in the contribution for fiscal year '26. We did keep the contribution to our central vehicle replacement fund at one point five million dollars. That is the amount we've tried to contribute to both funds over the last several years, but again, both funds have also benefited from year-end surplus transfers in the past.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further, Alderman Also?
Yes, on 355, 599001, contingent appropriation, why is that jumping up a million dollars?
So, our contingency account is used for anything that may come up that's unanticipated at budget development time, so emergency and unanticipated expenses that might occur, but it's also used as a funding source for increases in labor contracts that weren't known at budget development time. So, right now, we, the white collar, the fire union, the management union, and the school nurse supervisor union contracts all expire on June 30th of 2025. So, we don't know what the increases may be for those unions in fiscal year '26, so that is the major contributing factor to why the account is increasing by a million dollars, because it would help us to fund any increases that are awarded to those unions. We don't have the department's budget for possible increases within their own department budgets, really don't want different departments kind of guessing or putting in different amounts, so we plan for that in our contingency account, and then during the year, if the contract is settled and the unions are awarded raises, we would come to the board with a budget transfer request that would transfer the funding from the contingency account to the departments that need it, because the salaries weren't known at budget development time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions? All the women's...
Did we touch on the heart and hypertension? I don't...
No, there's also a...
Yeah, I was reading something, so, I'm sorry, Sarah, the, I just was asking, the request versus what we approve, or what the mayor's proposing?
Correct, so the request was at one point two million dollars for the contribution to our heart and hypertension fund, the proposed budget does include seven hundred thousand dollars as a contribution, so that was a cut of five hundred thousand dollars. We did feel that because the fund is in a good position, it could accommodate that cut.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further? Seeing none, we'll move to our retirement board. Give you guys a second, and then Alderman Rodriguez?
I only have one question for that. When are we going to be out of the woods? Page 378.
It's going to be a while, so... The pension obligation bonds, they mature in 2037, 2038 timeframe, it's a calendar year versus fiscal year, but it's out, it's out a good number of years.
Do you see a progress on that department in the last year?
Well, we, in combination with paying the debt service on the pension obligation bonds, there's an annual required contribution that goes into the pension fund, and the combination of those are tied to the same amortization schedule, where in 2037, 2038 timeframe, the fund will be in a very good position. It's the normal cost of the plan for pension benefits that are accruing to active employees, based on the restructuring that was done back with the oversight board, where overtime was taken out of the formula, extra duty was taken out of the formula, COLAs were out of the formula. All of those changes has created the scenario for future retirees, where there'll be pensions that will have been funded throughout their active years, and at a very affordable cost to the city. It's really the past service accrued liability that had built up before these modifications were made in the pension formula that will continue to need to be paid off on an amortized basis through 2037, 38 timeframe.
I know in probably 2020, in a couple of past years, we've seen an increase of people retiring. Have that been level already, or is still the height on retirees?
There was, at one point in time, you know, tied, we had a bit of an exodus in the police department area, but that has, that has completely flipped. You know, it was commented, I believe, during the budget presentation, you know, we're closing in on a workforce of three hundred, and in the budget is to increase to three fifteen. So, you know, there's always different reasons why an individual in any department for that matter will choose to retire, and it's, you know, we're finding that it's more cyclical now in a normal basis. Again, there was an uptick a few years ago, but we're at normal levels at this point. But that said, on the fire department's side, there were large classes that were hired in the early 2000s, where they'll be hitting their twenty-five years of service, and, you know, so there's the possibility over the next few years that we could have an uptick on the fire department's side.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further questions? All the women's...
And just, if you can confirm for me, so if we have a surplus and we want to put money down on our bond to prepay for it, we cannot do that, right? The bonds are frozen? Is that correct?
These are, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they, these bonds back in 2009 were structured with a call component, where if the bonds were going to be called earlier or paid off earlier, you'd essentially have to still pay the interest through the full redemption period on those bonds.
Okay. And then, do we have an annual percentage return on our pension investments? Like, what is our percentage return over, like, the past ten years? Investments?
I believe over the past ten years, it's in the six and a half to seven percent range. 2024, the last fiscal year, if I recollect, it's, we were a little, we were at twelve, twelve point one or twelve point two percent, so 2024 fiscal year was a very good year.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Yep.
Further questions? Here are none. That would be our business for the evening. I remind everybody, we've got an Alderman meeting next Monday night, and then we'll be back here again next Tuesday at 5:30 also, to continue our discussions. With that, Alderman Dorso. Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made in second, we are adjourned.